Time is 5:32 PM. It is Tuesday, August the 6th. And I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Heiser. Zuniga.
Present.
Harris.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
Tobias.
Here.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments period. Does anybody wish to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I will close citizen comments period. It's now closed. Next up is executive session. City council will now go into executive session to discuss items 1A through J pursuant to Texas government code sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087. Thank you. During executive session, there will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:02 PM. It is Tuesday, August the 6th. And I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Heiser.
Here.
Zuniga.
Present.
Harris.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, sir, to go and approve the meeting minutes for July 16th. Special meeting there. Same thing for July 24th and special meeting minutes for July 27th, 2024.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Tobias, second by Councilor Parsley that we approve the minutes as posted. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. This time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have a few folks registered already. First up, Mr. Domingo Castillo.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to all of you. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your service to our community. Running a city like Kyle can be very complicated, I know. So there's a lot of issues that can be made, a lot of mistakes can be made, but those are inevitable sometimes. In respect to the sportsplex, I would like, with all due respect, I would like to oppose that issue mainly because we should concentrate our financial aspects in improving Kyle, the roads, infrastructure, the road improvements, sidewalks, public safety, and downtown modernization. Also, in the last presentation, thanks to the marketing company stated that it takes about a five year before you realize a positive rate of return. When you consider two years of construction, they may see that the possibility exists that you might be investing about $100 million and it's going to take 70 years before you realize a rate of return, a positive rate of return. I doubt of any person that would invest his own personal funds would do that. Also, on item number 23, I oppose that. That should, no more additional expenditures should be undertaken until the public audience approves that the sportsplex. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Howard Connell.
Thank you, council, Mr. Mayor. Travis, where's my town hall meeting? Okay. Tonight, I am somewhere saddened and somewhere outraged. I'm going to tell you why. Our community, we spent the last several months door knocking, busting our butts trying to get signatures to defeat the healthcare initiative, I guess you call it. And last Saturday at the special meeting, we had quite a heated discussion over it. And Councilman Zuniga there, he asked for a legal opinion. You, Mr. Mayor, offered some explanations of why you folks ran with that recommendation on the healthcare. I understand that. But there was a firewall that could have been put up and stopped this. A firewall that would not require the citizens to go through what we've gone through. A firewall that would kept tearing this city apart. There's a crevasse between the council and the citizens. We are, we are very damaged. I hope this sportsplex is not like going into a bad marriage because a cake was ordered. Okay? Here's what happened. Mrs. Zuniga asked for a legal opinion. The attorney came up and gave us her personal opinion. She substituted a personal opinion instead of a legal opinion. She gave no points of law, no case law, no documents from her previous experience that she relied on to come to her conclusion. She gave you a bogus legal opinion. A paralegal would have given you a more solid answer because a paralegal would have said, "I'm sorry, but I'm not qualified to give you that advice." So you folks receiving a favorable, I guess, advice, she gave favorable advice back to her employer, the city, okay, which is really nice and cozy, and you folks ran with it. I don't blame you. I don't blame you. But I do blame her. I do blame the city attorney for giving you a personal opinion, not legal advice when it was asked for. And when you made your decision to move forward on it, you cost, potentially cost to citizens hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is serious. If that's the kind of advice you're going to get going forward, you better rethink it. Because I don't trust it. That was a big, big blunder going forward. And that's all I have to say because I want to say one other thing. If we can't trust you folks as leaders and you want us to go ahead and accept the sportsplex, how are we supposed to believe anything you say? Anything? It just doesn't work that way. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up, Jason Payne.
Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of the council, guests, local residents. My name is Jason Payne. I am a member of the VFW Post Kyle, Texas, post number 12058. I wanted to just give you a little bit of updates on things that have happened and things that are going to happen in our post and events coming up. We had a pretty great and successful hot dog hamburger event on the July 20th where we sold a little garage sale for anybody that wanted to. They could come up there and sell. We sold lots of hot dogs and hamburgers galore. So people got hot day, got lots of food, water and stuff. It was a very good event for the post. We also enjoyed lots of fellowship with other vets and new vets that wanted to come in, didn't know about the post, as well as local people in the area. We also have our telethon for the U.S. Veteran Service Dog. Some of y'all see Steve Cook walking around with his dog. His service dog has been a change of life for him to where he can actually come out to events like this. The telethon provides us with the capabilities of raising money to give. We're trying to get seven other vets in Texas. It's only a Texas deal, seven vets in Texas, those dogs. So the telethon is going to be for us to raise up and get money and it's going to be a full-out thing. Great place if any of y'all want to go. We have lots of volunteer shifts open, answer phones, stand up and talk a little bit, you know, whatever. That's going to be from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the 31st of August. We also have our VFW Halloween haunted house coming up. We're starting to do project and work on that and get it ready and everything. It'll be a great event to bring the family to. We're going to have different little things that everybody can enjoy and we're even going to have two separate paths, one for adults, one for kids that don't want to be just as scared as the adults, just a little bit. So we've got some actual full movie actors that are going to be joining us and getting suited up as zombies and other characters and stuff and be there. So it'll be a great event to come to. Also, every Friday, just want to invite everybody here in the community, in the city, the city council to come to our breakfast at 8:00 AM every Friday. It's a great place to come, meet your fellow local business members. We invite every local business to come in, host, do whatever they do, give them a platform to set up on and talk a little bit. It's a great place for even anybody looking to move up in offices or whatever, to come out and meet your local vets. We all know how opinionated we are on our politics. So it's a great place to come and talk to them and have spirited conversations. All right. Oh, I missed it. But thank you, we just got, for your time. We do have nine new vets that'll be coming in. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Payne. Appreciate it. All right, next up, Michael McDonald.
Good evening. Here in Kyle, we have a trust issue between our city council members, city manager, and the city residents. We don't trust you. You want proof? Look at how many times you voted for a council want and not a city need. This council votes as they please and rarely considers the concerns of the residents who oppose these council wants. Council members represent the taxpayers of Kyle and no other council members or special interest groups. This council votes as if they live in a vacuum, no accountability to anyone. This is why the residents have become active and are speaking up. Our council members need to be reminded they are spending hard-earned tax dollars on their wants and not on city needs. Is this why council is proposing to raise our property tax rates and our water and wastewater rates as well? Unfortunately, the taxpayers will be forced to pay for councils' irresponsible and misguided decisions. I've watched council members, you know who you are, vote in lockstep with Mayor Travis Mitchell regardless of whether the taxpayer opposes the agenda items. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves because you don't represent your rubber stamp. You have proven time and time again by your voting record that you are indeed a follower and not a leader. What legacy do you want to leave the citizens of Kyle? Higher taxes? Higher debt? Trust issues between council members and citizens? Keep it up, you're well on your way to succeeding. On the sportsplex bond proposal, the sportsplex is not a city of Kyle need, it is a council want. If this is such a great idea, why isn't the private sector, which is very competitive, knocking down our doors, wanting to front their own money to build it? The reason they aren't is simple, because it's not a good idea. It's a council want and not a city need. We're talking about a $65 million bond proposal for a council want. That's only for phase one. How much will our already high tax burden be increased for this proposal? What if $65 million isn't enough to finish the phase one? Who's going to pay the cost overruns? What if they need millions more to finish it? Who's going to pay for it? What if the sportsplex never turns a profit? Who will have to cover the cost to maintain it? Will the taxpayers on fixed income be forced to pay for this as well as taxpayers at or below poverty level? We don't need the sportsplex. We need our roads repaired, our sidewalks built, and new traffic solutions, which does not include 13 new roundabouts. We need an affordable city for everyone. We need a permanent and reasonably priced water source that can keep up with the growth of our city. Wake up, council members. Your legacy is staring you in the face. Vote no on the current sports plan.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is Hoyet Burnett, Reverend.
Good evening. I came to this meeting tonight with Janette. She's my friend and neighbor. She didn't let you know that she was going to need a parking spot for the handicap. You already had that. You didn't know that she was coming so that the doors would open up. It's already installed. It's already been paid for. There are a lot of things that have been done, even though you didn't know she was coming tonight and was going to need them. I represent the deaf community. The deaf community has found Hayes County, has found Kyle, and started moving here, moving here in great numbers. I bought a home 21 years ago. And 21 years ago, if I saw three cars on Center Street, that was a traffic jam. Today, I don't know where the end of that line is. We have certainly grown, but deaf people need to have access and they don't need to be having to telegraph, "Oh, I want to come tonight. Oh, I want to participate." We need to make sure that we have interpreters. Also, when we're running screens like that, closed captioning is so, so accessible. And when you have closed captioning, everybody benefits, everybody. They're now encouraging parents to run their TV sets with the closed captioning on. The children learn so much quicker. They learn so many new concepts and words. And when I see closed captioning on songs, I'm kind of shocked at the words. I thought I knew that song, but I didn't know those words. Captioning makes it possible for deaf people to have access. Do you know what the oldest public school in the state of Texas? Here. The oldest public school is the Texas School for the Deaf, established in 1856. Why our leaders founded the deaf school first, I have no idea. But since both my parents were deaf and since my first language is American Sign Language, and I grew up literally across the street from the Texas School for the Deaf, and that was my playground, all 67 acres. University of Texas only got 40. Of course, that was at that time. But we need to make sure that we are finding ways to include deaf people. They shouldn't have to say, "I'm here, I need it." It should already be provided. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is Marta Lyons.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Marta Lyons and I want to speak about Agenda 34, but I don't want to wait that long, so I'm speaking now. I live at 901 West Hayes, which is right behind the Kyle Library. About two years ago, I came to speak here regarding the abundance of mosquito, the mosquito population behind my home. I brought forth my concern about the, what I call the water retention pond that is located behind the Kyle Library. And that infrastructure starts about mid of the library and then it curves. And I think you guys have pictures of what I brought. Okay? Photo number three, where it curves, that sits right behind my house. Okay? It's, it's not that many feet away from my backyard and then it proceeds a pretty good stretch throughout several homes. Okay? After a good rain, it fills up, especially after some of the recent rains that we've had, and water tends to stand there. And the mosquitoes are bad. Okay? I enjoy my backyard, which is why I decided to, on my own, invest in a local company to come in and spray monthly. Okay? After, after a good rain, it fills and stands even on the hottest days, water remains, especially at the beginning. There's a tunnel, I call it a tunnel because I'm able to see it when the weeds die down. But that also attracts the trash that tends to flow and it's always wet. It's like a swamp. Okay? Sometimes that water, as you look at it, and I think Mr. Zuniga was able to see that when I showed him, it's got this bluish, greenish film on top of the water. I don't know what's up with that, but it's picking something up. Okay? Now, the city guys do a good job of mowing, weed eating, but that's out in the field. Okay? And I think I heard this term that there's, besides mosquitoes in the water, there's a, like a flood plantation type mosquito that just lays the eggs out on the dry field and they just sit there and wait for rain to come. Okay? So they're doing a great job maintaining it, looking good, but they're not going inside the pond and cleaning stuff out. Sometimes there's debris that you can see in the tunnel, water bottles, plastic bags, pieces of wood. I don't know where it comes from. Okay? My neighbors don't allow their kids to play in the backyard. That's how bad the mosquitoes are. I invested and since last year to this year, I've spent $1,000. I know I'm reaching if I was to ask if you guys could reimburse me. Anyway, I'm asking you guys to do your part and also maybe, and this is important, sorry, I recommend that you could put no trespassing signs because there are kids that like to go skateboarding in there, ride their bikes, and it's not safe and it drives my Shih Tzu crazy.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lyons. Appreciate that. All right, next up is Lisa Azar.
Am I able to refer my time to somebody else or no?
It's not, it's not a policy that we normally have. If you'd like, you're welcome to speak if you'd like.
Okay. Well, basically, I just wanted to say, I don't think we need any new taxes. I think our property taxes are high enough. We need new roads. Kind of pretty much everybody, everybody's been speaking about it. I'm hoping that you guys will understand, we're all, you know, paying more for everything. Inflation is, and we don't need more property tax and we don't need a sportsplex.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Stephanie McDonald.
Good evening. I'd first like to speak on the credit cards, the $500 stipend, expense stipend. Please amend ordinance, Agenda Item 25. Please amend that excess spending will decrease if expenses are placed on personal credit cards and reimbursed only if allowed and properly documented. Also, when a member of council leaves, you won't have to go back and try to get him or her to reimburse the city for improper expenses. We have clear policies in effect that are ignored, causing out of control abuses. There should be repercussions for those that have allowed the tens and possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been wrongfully spent. There's no need for a stipend. Our city council members are making almost three times the salary of our Hayes County State Representative, Aaron Swiner. Sports complex, I'm urging every member of council, please disregard the plans for the proposed sportsplex. It's not the right time to build this $185 million complex, which will cost us much more than that when all is said and done. The numbers you're providing are making huge assumptions that are irresponsible. The model you're following is the Grand Park Sports Complex in Westfield. In 2022, two months after it was put up for sale, one of the city councillors claimed it doesn't make money. At a meeting, he showed the park's revenue was over $6 million with over $3 million in expenses. The park's depreciation was just under $3 million that year, meaning the park was short around $200,000. He said the city still owes about $8 million on it and the debt cannot be assumed by anybody else. Since opening in 2014, revenue from the complex was still not covering all its own expenditures, even when leaving out debt payments, leaving out debt payments, but is relying on taxpayer money. Looking at another sportsplex in Mansville, Texas, the city council voted to take over management of that facility when the management company failed to comply with the payment terms, missing a quarterly payment to the city. It had fallen into bad disrepair and has been closed since December 2023. The city will take months to assess all the repairs that need to be made. Areas are unsafe, some inoperable. Prior to closing, people stopped playing there because of the conditions. All the turf on the fields must be replaced and it's on parkland, so it cannot be sold without approval of voters through an election. We've recently seen the poor condition of our park, sports facilities, and even our roundabouts. Thank you, Councilmember Tobias, for taking quick action on the disrepair at Mary Kyle Harts and Park when brought to your attention. If citizens would not have reported this, would it have been taken care of? If we can't maintain the smaller scale items we have in the city, how can you expect to maintain such a large-scale facility? We spent $1 million on plans for the sportsplex on Dacey and have thrown that idea out, throwing and wasting the $1 million spent on the plans. That's irresponsible use of our hard-earned money. Instead of taking another trip to Westfield Carmel, please take 15-minute ride over to Sam Marcus to look at their activity center, which is right next to their great library. We need a facility not built for spider tournaments and professional sports, but a much simpler, less costly facility with indoor areas like basketball courts for our kids to get out of the summer heat, an indoor walking track and a place where seniors can hold their exercise classes and other events available to the community. Yes, put it on the east side. They're overdue for a great amenity and you can even have a library there. Sam Marcus charges about $60 for the residents to have a one-year membership, about twice that for out-of-towners. And Mayor, last Saturday's meeting, you said you were thinking of the future more than the current residents. Please focus on the current residents regarding the sportsplex. I'd like to ask to move items 5, 6, 23, 25, 26, and 32 to the top of the discussion. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Ms. McDonald. That is all the forms that I have in front of me. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak?
Thank you, I'll make it quick. I would also like to ask to move Agenda Item Number 25 up and just state that this has been asked to be moved up every single time it's been on the agenda. So as agenda writers, I would like to ask the mayor and the assistant city, or the city manager, moving forward just to be a little bit more aware of the residents and how they like to see the agenda placed. So a few things that I want to talk about are the city needs. We have an alliance water line, city wastewater expansion, as well as a future wastewater outlet that's going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars that we need to create. Button Lane Road, not to be mistaken with Button Creek Road. Highway 150 bypass. Remote police offices for the east side. Senior Center. City sidewalks. City lights. Current city parks. Public transportation. Recreational Center. And a library, additional library, just to name a few. My point to bringing these up is, before we begin to talk about spending $185 million on a sportsplex, I would really like the council to take a good look at what our current needs are. I don't think a sportsplex is a bad idea. I do think it should be brought in by a third party. And I do think it should not bond out the rest of our capacity, bonding capacity. Currently, right now, we have a lot of financial needs. I don't know of any plans or any funding for any of the needs I just named. Some of them are going to be a necessity for the growing cities, such as the Arwa Water Lines and the wastewater expansion. So I think as soon as the city can create a plan for funding for our basic needs, then maybe we can talk about a sportsplex. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Good evening, my name is Courtney Goza. I wanted to comment on some events that happened on Saturday in regards to not being able to clap and for some of its rights. We were told a city may place limitations on the time, place, and manner of speech as long as the restrictions are content-neutral and narrowly tailored to serve a significant governmental interest and leave open ample alternatives for communication. Right now, those things are not being met. We have incidences where the citizens are not allowed to clap for our own comments. However, council seems to start clapping for themselves when they do things like bring in Hayes County barbecue. Those are inconsistent with those laws and possibly unconstitutional. While you say the reason for that seems to fit into those legal excuses, the actions, they go against the conscient neutrality of the requirement for those restrictions. This is yet another example of misguided policy executed by council to denigrate the citizens of this city, which you seem to do often. The city attorney has been at enough meetings to probably know that that's happening, that it's incongruent. We clap for proclamations, we clap for barbecue, but we can't clap for our own citizens who make relevant comments. You have a job to follow the laws of our nation, of our state, our charter, and all of the laws that you create. You don't take this seriously. And that's obvious in all of the things that you do constantly as a council. And we deserve better. We deserve a council who will be honest and have integrity and follow the will of the citizens that they were currently elected to represent, not the future citizens. And you have lost that. And I would also like to say, I would vote no for the sportsplex. It is not a good time for this city. We are facing high property taxes already. Instead of going with the no-revenue value, you're wanting to stay with the value we already have. Insurance has doubled for people. That happens for me, so my escrow has gone up each month. Property taxes aren't going to help that either. And now you want to look at adding a sportsplex for Phase 1 for it to be $150 for the average Kyle citizen? That doesn't work. That's not where we're at. Not when we're already struggling with infrastructure and water. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Hi, my name is Cindy Bolding. I just wanted to ask you to please move up 25 and 26 to the top of the agenda. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betty Conley, and I'm the president of the Kyle Area Senior Zone. And I want to invite you to an upcoming event on August 18. It's the Elvis Presley Tribute Concert. The band is with John Russell and his band. It's from 4:00 to 6:00 on August 18. And it is $5 pre-sale tickets and $7 at the door. All are welcome.
All right, thank you, Ms. Conley. Is there anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. It's now closed. Next up is Agenda Order, Agenda Item Number 2. Is there anyone who wishes to recommend moving items around on the agenda? Customer Tobias.
25 and 26.
All right. We're going to pull those from consent, and we'll take those off the top. What else?
34. Should be briefed, too.
All right, seem to have ejected to move an item 34 up. What else? Any other items? All right. So the consent agenda items, we're still going to leave things in their proper category. That's okay. And then we'll take those off the top. Next up is Agenda Item Number 3, Introduction of New Parks and Recreation Director, David Lopez.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I am happy to introduce to you all our new Parks and Recreation Director, David Lopez. He comes, here he is. He comes to us with over 20 years of Parks and Recreation experience in designing, building, and sustainably managing Parks and Recreation projects. He recently comes to us from the city of Dallas, where he oversaw 410 parks spanning 20,000 acres, including 200 miles of trail and over 200 athletic fields, and recently played a crucial role in helping Dallas receive the highest parks ranking among all major cities in Texas. And we're excited to have him here and his leadership here as we embark on, as you all know, a new updated Parks Master Plan, as well as many different parks projects across the entire city and our entire parks program, which will be, going into this next budget year, the single largest investment that the city has made in a single budget year for our parks, trails, and open spaces. So we're excited for that, and we're excited to have him here. And I'll give him the spotlight if he wants to say anything.
All right, Mr. Lopez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is David Lopez, and I'm honored to serve as your new Director of Parks and Recreation. Pardon the Parks Guy pun, but we've got a lot of ground to cover. And we're going to be sharing some exciting updates with you all next month on state of the parks. We're going to talk about the path forward for accomplishing some major milestones that this community has wanted for a number of years. And we want to position Kyle as a destination community for not just being a place to live and work, but also to play. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Some quick questions.
Hang time, Mr. Lopez. All right, Mr. Zuniga, all right.
Well, yeah, I'd like to welcome you, Mr. Lopez, for coming to Kyle. Also, I mean, I do have some questions. We have a very ambitious Parks Master Plan here in Kyle. I think we take a lot of great pride in the work that our amazing Parks and Rec staff has done over many of the years. They're very dedicated. They're very invested in this community. And so with you now coming on board, like, what type of plan or strategy do you have to help our amazing staff transition and be better at, you know, whatever you're proposing to make in terms of your strategy for, so that we have, you know?
Thank you, Councilmember Zuniga. So I'm glad that you asked that. We have some ambitious goals for staff in development and training opportunities. We're going to be presenting some of those things next month to you all, but we think rising tide lifts all boats. And so in investing in our employees, giving them opportunities where they can come into our system and they can see a clear career path to positions that they want to be in, understanding how the system works, with their help building operational standards is going to be instrumental so that they know how to manage our parks, how to care for what the community's needs are, doing safety inspections on playgrounds, knowing about horticulture and mowing standards. There's a whole slew of things that I could spend a lot of time talking about. I geek out over park stuff. But they're our most critical asset. What we have are just lofty plans without the staff there and the team to execute these things.
Thank you. Just wanted to see the training. Obviously, there's going to be periods where we have to enable our employees to be able to learn those skills, right?
Yes, sir.
And so they could implement that great standard in the park care and maintenance, right?
Does anybody else have any comments or questions for Mr. Lopez? Mayor Proton.
Just want to welcome you to Kyle and thank you for leaving the Dallas area for Kyle, Texas. Look, this is something that the city council for the last couple of years has really tried to focus on, and we finally have the right funding in place to do a lot of our new park improvements that are badly needed throughout the city of Kyle. But, you know, I think staff has done what they could with the limited budget they had. But now having this large budget, I want to make sure that we're definitely implementing, you know, the strategies needed, where we look at every park. We go in there, we photograph it from the air and from every angle, and making sure that we walk the grounds and make sure we're doing a great job of taking care of what we're trying to preserve. And that's our park space. And the reason why is that our park spaces, our trails prove very beneficial during COVID when people were trying to get out. And for peace of mind, not just for health, peace of mind, they proved to be very critical for our city. So just, I think that's why council is taking the path forward along with our, you know, city government to really invest back into our parks. So I look forward to seeing what that strategy is moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
Just add real quick. Welcome to Kyle as well. And I want to let you know that you're in good hands because we have a great Parks Department with Mariana, Stacy, Benito, Amy, and Claudia. They have done a tremendous job through the years. And so we're very excited that you're going to be working with them on a lot of the programs. So thank you very much. Welcome aboard, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 4, Introduction of New Library Services Director, Leslie Scott. Ms. Smits.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amber Smits, Assistant City Manager, for the record. I'm so excited to introduce our new Director of Library Services, Ms. Leslie Scott. She started on Monday. She comes to us from the city of Prosper. She has over 20 years' experience working in libraries in municipalities and then at a university as well. She has her Master's in Library and Information Science, and she also has a million certifications underneath her. So we're so excited for her knowledge and her leadership and expertise. And to have someone like her in Kyle is amazing. We're going to have her help us roll out the biggest investment in the library that the city of Kyle's ever made to date. She's going to help deploy the new bookmobile when we get that at the end of this calendar year and then undertake the strategic plan. Any questions?
Ms. Scott, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just, I'm excited to be here, thrilled to be here. The staff have been awesome welcoming me. Yesterday was my first day, and it's been an awesome two days. I'm excited and passionate about libraries, and I hope that you see that every day in what we do at the library. We have a great library, and we're going to be even better. And we're going to enhance more programming, more items, physical and electronic. We're going to start on a strategic plan so that we also learn about what everyone wants in our library and how we can meet those needs for our community.
All right, thank you, Ms. Scott. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Customer Parsley.
Would you agree we need a bigger library? I'm just going to throw that out there.
I agree, either bigger or second. Absolutely, and that's what the strategic plan will help us, guide us on what we do need. Square foot per capita, programming, staffing, funding. All of those things come from an awesome strategic plan.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you, too, and I look forward to working with you. I think you also had in your resume, you've written grants before.
I have. And I'm also the Treasurer of TMLDA, which is the Texas Municipal League's Library Director Association of the entire state. So very familiar with outsourcing, financing, assistance for libraries as well.
That's a great asset to have. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 5, Receive a Report, Hold a Discussion, Provide Staff Direction Regarding Conceptual Designs, Amenities, and Financials for the Proposed Kyle Sports Complex. Mr. Elzondo.
Right. There was a collective cry that went out in the DFW Dallas area when we stole David from their park system. You could hear it all the way over here. I'm excited about having him onboard. All right, Mayor and Council, tonight, we wanted to give a more detailed, more in-depth look at the conceptual design of the Kyle Sportsplex project. We did a conceptual design of the whole project last council meeting and ran through it, but we wanted to really get into what would be a possible phasing, potential funding plan, as well as looking at the opinion of probable construction cost for certain phases for the plan, and then also looking at updated performas for that specific portion, which we'll get into, and then also some ballot language and next steps of where we're heading for this with the sportsplex. So for anyone watching that may not know, we'll run through a quick timeline. We had a special council meeting in June 8 where council gave staff direction to start looking at conceptual designs and building out the sportsplex. We engaged STANTEC to look at that conceptual design and rendering, as well as Hyundai Partners to look at the performa and economic impact. That was in the council meeting of June 18. We looked at the Parks Master Plan, the previous Parks Master Plan, community surveys, the comprehensive plan, and had conversations regarding input and studies. We looked at a CSL International Market Study for feasibility that spoke to industry growth, the limited inventory in our area,[1527.06] inventory in our area, and the high demand for the sportsplex and fields, indoor and outdoor. There was a design charrette in June that looked at vision, priorities, opportunities, economic impact, and specifically the identity of what the sports complex would be. And then we had multiple stakeholder meetings from June through July where we met with all of our city council members and elected officials. We met with the task force that was tasked at looking at the sportsplex. And then last council meeting on July 16th, we walked through the full conceptual design and got feedback and discussion from council. This is all going to be a bit of a recap from yesterday, but I'll go, I mean, from last council meeting, seems like yesterday. But I, but I'll go quickly. This was a review, this was a review of what Hunden looked at from the standpoint of our sports facilities in the, not only the regional and Austin, San Antonio area, but also in the state, looking at the DFW, and kind of outlined the limited inventory specifically for indoor, but also for outdoor facilities. STAN Tech utilized this more local map to look at a two-mile radius and shows kind of the stakeholders that are impacted by that specific location that was picked, going all the way out to about a 45-minute walk. And you can see there's a tremendous amount of stakeholders that are encompassed in that two-mile radius. This was a look at the city of Kyle versus the national standards for indoor and outdoor park facilities. And while there's a lot on this slide, I think what resonated most was this gap down here at the very bottom showing the difference between what the city of Kyle currently has and the national standards across really every indoor and outdoor facility, but specifically the indoor courts and facilities. And then we looked at just kind of the charrette and how STAN Tech kind of ran that process and the different project vision, the different elements that were brought into it, and specifically the project goals, which was that this sportsplex would be multipurpose and connected to the community. It would bring out activity in the community and really have an economic impact and an economic draw from a regional and a statewide draw, and then, and then look at the, bringing the identity of the city of Kyle into the sportsplex. And then we, this is again a recap, but we looked at kind of the full overview of the site itself and ran through each one of these with council. And these are just some renderings, some conceptual renderings of the site itself. This is walking up from the, from, from brick and mortar up to the north, looking at the front of the building. You can see there's elements of the city of Kyle built into it, like the, you know, conceptually, like the water tower there. This is the front of the sportsplex. These were slides that showed, these were slides that showed trails navigating throughout and trying to show that there would be elements of public art and elements of Kyle built in to the trails and to the connection between east and west of 1626. This again is a, just the front end of the, of the sportsplex with that big plaza area, that kind of grand walkway as you walk in, that entranceway into the, into the sportsplex area, some of these renderings. This is just north of, with the multipurpose fields just north of the site itself. You can orient yourself with the big TV screen on the right there. It's kind of swinging around to the north of the building. And this is looking on from 1626 from the backside where the volleyball courts are. So that was just, that's just a quick recap of everything we kind of looked at from the last meeting in case anyone was watching and needed to be brought up to speed. So what we really wanted to do for this conversation tonight is look at a more specific phasing plan as far as what would be potentially in phase one, and then how it would be broken down from a funding standpoint and so forth. So what we did was we broke out what would be a potential phase one for the 2024 general obligation bonds. And we'll get down to the actual breakdown of the funding on the next slide, but this is just a graphical representation. Everything in gold, which we'll zoom in here and look at it more closely, but everything in gold is what we're considering what would be a potential phase one. It incorporates the indoor sportsplex, the plaza and the outdoor, the championship field that's just north of the sportsplex there, and then the multi-use fields that are over in the east section with tennis courts and pickleball courts. And then you have Cromwell, which runs from Avenue A all the way up north to Rickardson. That's all what's considered with multiple levels of funding, which we'll get into in just a minute. But that's all what we're considering a potential phase one. Now, this is, at the end of this presentation, this is up for council's discussion and feedback. This is just what we were looking at from a funding standpoint. The rest of it, which is in this bluish, greenish color, is what we're considering potential phase two and phase three as far as funding plans. So here's our potential phase one breakdown. So if you look at the gold area right there and you just zoom into it, that's what you're looking at here in this picture. And this is a conceptual rendering of the indoor sportsplex, the buildings, the plaza, that championship field, and those outdoor amenities. The way that we're looking at this from a potential phase one funding breakdown is 2024 general obligation bonds, about $65 million. This is obviously pending voter approval if we went to the voters. This would cover the indoor multi-use facility, the, some site control and preparation, the building, the interior, the finish out. And then also, we think that it would also cover exterior improvements like the plaza area, amenities around the plaza, and then also some, some other, some other money that could go into areas of the outdoor site improvements. There's also existing money, which is from a 2020 general obligation bonds, which is $7 million from the city, $7 million from the county, that we would look at utilizing for the outdoor sports improvements. That's the championship field, the tennis and pickleball courts, the volleyball courts, and then landscaping, lighting, irrigation, those type, those type of things on this, this phase one site. And then we're looking at the tours and other funding, the other funding coming from some specific parks funding that we've identified that would, we could look at utilizing for the Cromwell Road that runs Avenue A all the way up to Rickardson, and beautification along that road for the roundabouts, for some public art, and then also the road landscaping and other elements. And then, of course, we have $3 million that is also existing of reclaimed water. That's that purple pipe that we got through our legislative program from the federal government that we're utilizing to run purple pipe up to irrigate and spray over these fields. We also had STAN Tech relook at their opinion of probable construction costs because the previous one you saw at the last meeting, the 185 million, that was covering the entire site itself. This is an OPCC over that specific phase one of what we're looking at tonight. And so their evaluation of that site prep and the recreation center, the Cromwell Road and exterior improvements, sorry, let me go back real fast. The total down here from our, from our breakdown is 98 million. So with the new OPCC through STAN Tech with an 18%, $13.5 million contingency, they came, they came to a conclusion of 99,300,000. So it's, it's within the same range as what we were looking at from this funding breakdown. And then what we had Hunden do is go back and do the exact same thing that STAN Tech did with their OPCC. They took just the phase one and they reevaluated the three performas that they built for us. The first one, there's three here in a row. The first one is the actual revenue that's generated from the, from the sportsplex itself. The second one is the economic impact of the sportsplex, so the money that's going out from the sportsplex being there to the community. And then the third is some hotel and sales tax of what we could, think we could generate. And so what they did was they redid their performance based on just that phase one, if, if it were built. And something, we can run through these numbers, but something I really want to point out is that in the previous proforma that was looking at the entire site itself, this, the actual revenue that was being generated from the site did not become net positive until year three. In this, if you look at the year one, it's net positive. And the reason for that is the real draw, the real regional draw and statewide draw from the entire sportsplex was mostly from the indoor courts, from the indoor facilities and some of those fields that are on the outside. So you're, you're still generating 85% to 90% of the revenue that was projected from the entire site. That's not to say those fields to the north near Rickardson and across 1626 aren't valuable, but they aren't, they aren't the ones that are, that are drawing the majority from the regional and from the state. And that's where a lot of that revenue is coming in from. And so with that site, the indoor site drawing that revenue, you're still, you're still generating 85% to 90% of the revenue. However, your expenses for taking care of those fields in phase two and phase three, maintaining them, they drop dramatically, more than 25%. So you're seeing, that's why you're seeing the revenue becoming net positive in year one, if you just looked at the phase one that we're talking about. The total room nights generated, they drop about 10%. Again, it's not a tremendous amount because, again, that, that indoor facility is what's drawing the majority of the, the draw from the regional and statewide league plays and things like that. So that's why you don't see a huge drop off there. And then if you're looking at the economic impact, it's more of the same. You have about a 10% to 12% drop off from revenues that are being generated around the community from lodging, retail, transportation. It's not a dramatic drop off because, again, that draw from the, from the indoor sportsplex. And you can see the same thing with direct, indirect, and induced spending, drops about 10% to 12%, not a tremendous amount. And if you look at the sales tax and hotel tax, again, it drops a small amount. It's not generating a tremendous amount of money over 30 years, but it is something. And we have the potential city venue tax as well, the 2%, which we don't currently have, but is something that we could look at in the future. We wanted to show you all a bit of ballot language, what it could look like. We got with our bond attorney and our, our bond counsel and drew up some potential ballot language. This isn't anything that you all need to decide on or anything like that, but it's, it was something we wanted to show you, just what the language might look like. The, the highlighted yellow is what could be, what could be changed or tweaked or, or as far as what would be on the ballot. And then I just wanted to remind everyone, before we get to the next steps here, that this master plan of the site itself would continue on with STAN Tech in conjunction with our updated Parks Master Plan, which has been approved through council. There's a, a tremendous amount of overlap as far as the community input that's being evaluated through both of these projects and also, and also the design as we go forward with the master planning of the sportsplex. I also wanted to remind you all that apart from the sportsplex, we have $25 million over the next five years to invest into our current park system, trails and open spaces. And the Parks Master Plan will run congruently with that as we start to invest that money. We won't have to wait till the Parks Master Plan is fully complete before we start investing that money in our current parks and trail system. It's, it's an exciting time for the entire park system, for the, for the city of Kyle. So your options tonight from a next step standpoint are to, we have a meeting set on 8:15. We have other items from the city that are going to go on that meeting regardless. So that meeting's happening. If we were going to call the election, it would be at that meeting on 8:15 for a $65 million bond proposition. We could proceed with phase one. If you did not call that on 8:15, we could proceed with phase one using existing funding, the 33 million that's already existing and identified, and look at elements of that phase one and what we could invest that in. We could take no action tonight as far as the moving forward with the bond proposition, but we could also, but we would continue with the master planning design with STAN Tech that would run in conjunction with the Parks Master Plan, or some variation of the two or three. So that is my presentation, and we're asking council for feedback and discussion on this.
Do you all have any objection to me going ahead and bringing up agenda item number 32, which is the vote on the bond, so that we can take the action and make the decision here and now off the top? Is that okay? Since it's being brought forward, we want to discuss it?
If I could, item 32 is independent of this particular issue. That's related to...
Where's the, where's the bond? Where's the item?
That would be on August 15th. That would be on the next...
You just want direction. I'm sorry. I, I see the vote to place a proposal on the agenda, and so it just messes me. All right. There is no actual item.
Correct.
But we'd like to give you some feedback. So does anybody have any feedback with regards to the questions? Customer Heiser.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this has been, the idea of having an indoor sportsplex is a project that I very much believe in from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, given that we need to build a recreation facility for our residents. But as time has gone on, I have started to poke holes in our process, in my thought process, and have come to the conclusion that now is not the right time to be going to bond for an indoor sportsplex. And so I just, given the amount of feedback that's been provided to us and knowing that we have a lot of crucial decisions to make in regard to the outdoor sportsplex, which was bond funded in 2020, I, I wanted to let the record show where I stand on this. So those two projects can be decoupled for further conversation. So that's, that's all.
Additional comments? Mayor Proton?
I just want to start off by saying that, yeah, I think the process is being a little rushed. I, I'm kind of feeling, seeing all the questions that are here. I don't think we've done a good job as a city to give everybody the information they need to see what's really going on with this sportsplex and what the reason was. I know we got really excited. But from the start, this is not a council decision. This was still going to go to the voters to see if we were ready for one. But really, I don't think we're even ready to bring it to bond this year because I don't think we've done a great job as a city to bring out all the information that residents need to have. And that's why we have a number of residents here speaking against it because we just haven't given them the information they need moving forward. You know, I'd love to see a rec center here. I, I go to the rec center in San Marcos with my daughter, and the majority of the people there say they don't have access to it because they, they lease out to, they rent out to the pickleball and other things. So it's, they're competing for that space pretty hard. And it's, it's, it's getting harder and harder to find space anywhere in the area for our kids, for any of the kids regionally. But I just don't think that we're probably in the right time right now to bring in a sportsplex. And honestly, I, I definitely would love to see more, more investment in, in the building to be larger than aesthetically pleasing. I'm, I'm more into user, using it, building a building that's affordable, but that can also function well. It doesn't have to be a really fancy building. It just needs to be usable, where our, our kids could come in and really participate. But it's for everybody. I mean, it would have been for the kids, for seniors, for everyone, because we would have had basketball courts, volleyball courts, indoor football, and pickleball as well. So it would have been a really nice building to build, but I, I just don't think we're ready right now. Thank you.
Customer Zuniga.
Yeah, it's pretty shocking. But I just want to be kind of clear on this, too. When we bond, we, we, we sacrifice other projects that our community could need, projects that could provide more long-term, you know, opportunities for our city. So I was a little skeptical of doing this one, but if the voters approved it, then I was going to be all in for it. Because, believe me, guys, we could not leave this project halfway done. So voting for the 65 is really triggering phase two, phase three. Because to make this work, you have to go all in. And I'm ready to do that if that's what the voters want. But I also think, looking at where we are as our city, we have a lot of needs in the older parks. We have to amenitize those parks. So I would like to step back, take care of, and sustain what we have, bring it up to gold standards, invest twice as much if you have to in the older parks, and really provide an indoor public facility for the kids in underserved areas. And then we could really come back to this project. Because I do believe this is an economic driver. The only question is, do we want to do it right now, or do we want to wait? Because everything is moving into putting this there for our city. And eventually, we probably will have this very beautiful thing. I just don't know if this is the time in seeing where we are with our growth and if we want to take care of visitors, or do we want to take care of our residents first? So that's the question we have to answer, you know? But like I said, I'm ready to say no to this, but if it gets pushed anyway, and it passes, then I will not let our city go into failure mode. So that's where I will be.
Councilmember Parsley.
I'm shocked, but it makes me happy because my, my thoughts were we are about to start issuing bonds for roads probably next year. I mean, I know that we are about to set our tax rate, which the amount will remain same, but still, we know that as soon as we start issuing bonds, the next tax rates are all going to go up. Second, we have already approved an outdoor facility bond, and we haven't designed it. And so I think, how are we going to go to bond for a sportsplex, an outdoor, indoor facility? We haven't even done anything with what we have already approved. So again, I would like to remind everyone, our priority used to be a community center, library concept that has more amenities for everyone, not just the sports. And I'm all about the sports because I do think that that will bring kids, you know, that will keep them out of trouble. But I do think that we need to listen to the needs for every resident to include, you know, we got a letter about an auditorium. I think that would be a phenomenal idea. So it is good that everybody thinks that we need to press pause, take a step back, and maybe discuss again what the priorities are and if, when the right time is to bring a bond like this.
All right, Dr. Harris.
Well, I, I agree with Dr. Zuniga that this will be an economic driver. It's very rare for us to be able to have something that will pay its own way when we do a bond. When we do a road bond, we pay it out of our pockets. This will pay for itself. I think that it will more than adequately serve our citizens because we will have control of the facility. If you bring, if somebody else brings a facility in, they have control of that. They charge for that. And we have no control of what goes into that or how it's used. So we would have complete control of the facility. That would be a great asset. It will generate a tremendous amount of revenue within the community that goes directly into the budget. So I think it's, it's an excellent concept. I would not have any trouble delaying, however, the vote on, on putting it onto bond for another year or so while we get better details for the residents, get more resident input before we go to bond instead of after we go to bond. I think it would be wise.
Can I say another thing?
Councilmember Tobias.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Well, I applaud my colleagues here on the dais for being truthful and honest on this because it is a very, it is something that I know we've been talking about for years now going forward. STAN Tech, you did a great job of presenting what you had, you know, what, you know, giving us some kind of concept design versus colorings and so forth and drawings. So I applaud you on that effort there. But it is true, we have to come sometimes down back to earth, to reality of the financial situations our residents are facing. We are going through an inflation issue. We have 3.20 a gallon on gas. Prices are going up. There's numerous events going around town where people are needing shoes and backpacks for our kids. So families are struggling and people are having a hard time. And, and sometimes you have to really look at this and, and evaluate, like some of colleagues here, and see, is this the right time for something like this? Great concept. I know it'd really pay off in the long run for our residents. I just don't feel that we should be putting our residents in this financial situation if we were to go for a bond, if we don't have all our information. And on a second note, we have just hired our new Parks Director. And I would be very curious to see what his ideas and visions are for a possible complex and so forth, if he's done anything like that in the past. I'd like to be able to see what kind of ideas that he would bring forward and, and reach out to the community. And it could be something like this, but maybe on a smaller scale. Because again, we wanted to benefit all our residents in all ages. So it's, it's, it's okay to sometimes step back and say no because the timing's not right, but it doesn't mean that we as a vision, as, as our council, is not, not, not seeing that we're just throwing it away. We do have a vision as far as a rec center in the future. So we just kind of, kind of sometimes look at that.
All right. Do you have motions on the options, Councilmember Zuniga?
Yeah, I mean, just for me, one of the things I think that I could have had more support behind this would have been if we had a, a public indoor facility on, on the other side of our city so that, you know, it's, it's more, it's fairer. So, but also, when I looked at the numbers and I looked at the research of these types of attractions, they are economic drivers. They don't produce money, but it's the sales and the economic impact that drives, right? So, but when I look around, we just don't have the hotels. So we would be missing out on those room nights, you know, for a period of time, right, until that comes. And we don't really have a private partner with us. I think that if this would have came with a private partner putting some, some risk into it, it would make a little more sense. But for me, it's just not having... But for me, it's just not having a lot of the hotel taxes to collect and then the visitors would be competing with our own residents at the, at the restaurants that we do have right now. So, I mean, I just don't, I think that we're going to be there, but right now, probably not there. But I would say this is still a great project to, to, to look at, just not, not the right timing right now. But with a partner. Those are my thoughts.
Do you have, does anybody have preference on an option?
Mayor, can I get some clarification on, on what option two entails? Is that basically just proceeding with the plans to move forward with the, the 2020 voter approved bond funding plus the additional funding we've allocated for the outdoor portion of the, the sportsplex? Is that what that is?
That's right. Jesse, if you don't mind, can you go back to the funding slide? Forgotten the slide number on that. I believe it's slide 21.
What is that?
On slide 21, so.
Gone?
He's trying to change the slide and it's not.
Oh, okay. So Councilmember Heiser, you're correct. It's the 14 million in bonds that were previously approved, seven from the county, seven from the city. We identified another 16 million in funding that could be invested in the sportsplex as well as the 3 million for the reclaimed waterfront. So that's what that is. If you guys want us to continue, that option two is continue with that process and to look at what we can build in outdoor amenities, Cromwell Avenue extending that, look at that process and see what we can come back to on that. That's, that's one of those options that is up there for you.
All right. Then, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with option, was it two? I can't see it anymore. It was two, correct? With option two?
That would be to continue with the design for the already approved bond for the outdoor facility.
Correct. Proceed with phase one using existing funding. Yeah.
Yeah, I would be on board with that second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Heiser, seconded by Councilmember Parsley that we proceed with option two. Is there a discussion on that motion?
Yeah. And just to be clear, that's the funding that was already approved by the voters. So we're not doing anything else when it comes to bringing anything to bond this year. So this will be the approval that the voters have already given us, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's the TERS for money, right? To finish the street?
No, no, not right now. No, sir. It's potentially, we could have some additional TERS funding. The 16 million is funding we've identified in the budget process that could be allocated primarily from the general fund over time, over a five-year period for that particular project.
But it already has a TERS. So why would you take the general fund?
Because the TERS does not have additional capacity for these additional projects, not yet. You may have some as we've looked at Kohler's, the roundabouts and the various projects, Avenue A, the retail roads, all of those projects have used a lot of the capacity for that TERS, at least for the, for the next few years.
Yeah, that's a little tough because that is the TERS. So I thought it was using the TERS money.
No, sir. That 16 million is additional funds that we've talked about for the sportsplex.
If I may add, if, again, could we just pause on this completely until we get some feedback from our new Parks Director? He might be able to provide some concept designs since he's going to be in control of this in the long run. If we can go ahead and include him in the conversations before we approve a phase one because it's like we're saying no to the whole project, but now we're saying yes to a specific amount. Should we just wait until we can get some feedback from Mr. Lopez? And if we bring this back maybe by year's end or by, by next year, we will have a full concept of what his goals are matched with city council, matched with the funding, matched with what we're able to spend.
Councilmember Tobias, I think, I think based on what you're saying and maybe the, maybe the options might be our fault that they're not super clear. I think what you're talking about is option three, which is to take no action on what's happening with, currently with the sportsplex phasing plan and to then continue with the Parks Master Plan and the, the master planning of the site itself. And then look at the master plan as we go forward that has all of the citizen input and all of the inventory of our current parks and the need assessment and everything that they're going to identify in conjunction with what our new Parks Director is going to look at from a needs assessment of our, our current facilities and parks and trails and then bring that back before we take any action on, on.
Exactly. Because not, not only, not only are we still on goal with the vision itself for a complex, not shooting the entire project down, but including our city staff to include our Parks and Rec Department, include public input, include possible county input as well. Since we have a new director, utilize him to be able to help us design this. And in that way, we don't have to partner up if we don't need to. It would all be city funded, including for what we could use for the residents. Even if we need to reach out to the school district, allow him to reach out as well and just make it a big whole project for our community. That's, that would be my recommendation.
So just to clarify to, for the council, the council had previously approved a contract with StanTech to do the design of the outdoor sportsplex. And so this is an amendment we would need to come back. But as part of that, there was an extensive public outreach campaign as a component of that, as well as in the Parks Master Planning process. So I think, you know, some, something we can certainly do is conduct all that outreach in conjunction with that, certainly getting Mr. Lopez's feedback as we go through that process as well and bring, and come back to you with additional information before starting something else. So maybe, maybe that's the option four here is just a little bit of a refinement of these areas, coming back and discussing exactly what we would do in terms of next steps.
The big decision here is that we're not going to move forward with the next meeting. Feeling rushed to make a decision is not, the only rush.
That's all it is.
Is calling the bond. That's it. Which is why I was thinking we were signaling earlier, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Everything else can take place. Take no action.
Yeah.
And except to say we're not going to call the bond. And so that puts everything back to where it was, you know? So we couldn't get to this point without cultivating the option. So that's, you know, really my standpoint on all of this. I have different commentary and advice that I would give to the city with regards to how it views what is in its best long-term interest. I do think that our, our need for sports infrastructure is the most pressing need, more than some of the other projects that are presented. And I think that bears out, but it's not, it doesn't bear out as perfectly as, as perhaps we could have fleshed it out. There is a danger, I think, in, in, in having, if we all don't agree on what to do and nobody, and nobody moves forward and we can't get behind a long-term, big plan, then we're going to miss out on opportunities as a city. But I, I want to see the, the town prosper and, you know, I, I think that potentially the phasing proposal, you know, could work. Going to, there's another big bond that's on the ballot this November that's also very important and that's a county roads proposition. So there's been a lot of consideration that's been given recently. Do we want to bring up a sportsplex next to the county roads proposition? But the problem is if you wait until next year and go to the voters, there's going to be something on the ballot next year and the year after that and after that. And sportsplexes don't get cheaper, you know? There's just not, not a lot of those options. And I do think that the long-term impact of such a facility would bring the hotels and would bring the type of use that we would want to see. But that being said, you know, we really do need to decide, I think, do, are, are we keeping going with the 2020 voter approved bond at a minimum? I mean, because what I'm, what I get worried, so I guess what I get worried about is when I see, all right, we're not going to go with number two, proceed with phase one using existing funding. We're going to go with something different. We're going to put a pause on everything. We're already four years waiting and we're now in the, let's wait a couple of years and then design and wait a few more years and sports fields get more, it's a whole nother generation of kids that misses the chance to compete here locally in, in sports facility using that infrastructure. So anyway, those are my thoughts. I would like for us to move forward. We could, we could, we would have the opportunity to ask the voters, you know, it's like we're talking about doing, we went to the voters in 2020, we asked them for, for money for a sportsplex and that was our initial vision for it was sort of small. And here we are in 2024 asking the voters again or potentially considering it when we haven't started the original amount. So I, I think to myself, would this be a lot easier if we already had the 2020 phase one that the voters already approved up and off the ground? And the answer is probably yes. Because I think, I'd like for folks to, you know, really know what it is, you know, that is possible for us to achieve here, but we don't know because it's not there. And it's not that, you may think that that's the city's fault. It's not. It's a combination of things that led to all the delays and in particular, getting the $7 million from the county. So I very much would like to see us not give up on the sportsplex, which is the way it feels because they don't, you know, there's hesitance about going to bond. But we've already gone to bond and gotten that money and put together a plan that could, could, could make an impact, would be meaningful and it doesn't take anything, I see your hand, Mayor. Just let me finish, please. And just.
I had it up first.
All right. Well, I, I was just waiting, so I, I.
Councilman Parsley, go ahead.
Thank you. So if we are, I know we haven't done any votes, but if we are not going to be moving forward with putting anything on the bond, on the ballot for November, is there any way that we can ask from staff to bring back in the next meetings, what was the results from the public outreach that was done prior? What has StanTech done already regarding the outdoor sportsplex? If they have done anything, just for us to be able to show the resident? What has already been approved? What funding did we have? And then get, you know, get Mr., Director, Mr. Lopez to, to be able to continue maybe with the outdoor, have an input in there for us to be able to see if we want to start moving forward designing and completing something that has already been approved?
Sure. Certainly at a future meeting, we could come back.
In the future.
It won't be the next meeting. We, we do have a lot of work that's really been done with StanTech primarily. The amendment we did to their contract was to work on the conceptual designs and very quickly push through all of these different pieces. So that's really been the focus over the last few weeks. And it's the direction is to now go back and, and start that public outreach. We'll do that and then come back at a time when we have some feedback from you that we could share. But it, it will, it will be most likely a couple of months before we'd be ready to do any of that.
All right. Councilor Heiser.
I, two questions, maybe more. Number one, have, just confirm, we have done public outreach, correct? And the?
No, the public outreach was done previously. So what we talked about was the prior master plan that had been done. We've also done work on a variety of other subjects that Jesse went through in the presentation. But it hasn't been a public outreach on this particular conceptual rendering and what are the amenities and the types of things that people want to see in this complex. And I think that's what I'm hearing from the council is now let's go to that process, see what that would look like in context with everything else that we're doing in the park system. So where we put pickleball courts here, how does that affect other assets in the other parks that we have around the city? And where do all those assets land and why? And then bring that back to you with public input and a recommendation of how that would work. That's, we can certainly do that.
Does option two exclude our new Parks Director from providing that feedback?
It's so hard to understand what these options are.
That's what I'm trying to.
We don't know whether we're moving forward or not.
I, I have no idea why we would hire a new Parks Director if we weren't going to have them be a leading force in this project if we were to go to option two.
Of course, Mr. Lopez is going to be involved in any of these things as well as the entire park system.
He's just, he's also not a sportsplex designer, engineer and architect.
It's a tall order after just a couple of weeks.
We're throwing a lot of stuff up, up, up here. We've been working on this plan for five years. It's not brand new.
Right.
It's a well-baked plan, so.
Well, we're trying to.
Lot of outreach.
I just, maybe I can make this a little clearer. I'm going to take the options off the screen.
Yes.
I think, Mayor, you were exactly right. The question tonight is, are we going to that 8:15 meeting with a proposal to go to bond? If it is, it's very, it seems very clear from a staff perspective that that's not what we're doing, that is not the will of council. However, that does not exclude us from doing anything else with existing funding if, in regards to our park system. And what we have planned to do, if we don't go to bond for the sportsplex, is to continue the master planning of the site because that's a contract we have with StanTech. Not build it, just master plan it in conjunction with our Parks Master Plan, which will look at a tremendous amount of public outreach. It will take inventory of all of our parks, recreation, open spaces, facilities. It will have a, a full holistic view of what we're doing and, and our new director, Mr. Lopez has, will be fully involved in all of those things. And then any of the stuff that we come to do after we look at a needs assessment, after we look at underserved areas, after we look at all of the different things that that Parks Master Plan starts to outline, we will come to council. We could use any of the existing funding, including the bond funding, but it will come before council as far as what the master plan says, what we've identified and what we're going to do with certain projects. So I think really the only question tonight is, are we going to the 8:15 meeting for the $65 million bond proposal? And it seems clear from a staff perspective that that is not what we're doing. But that does not exclude us from doing anything with existing funding or going forward with our Parks Master Plan and spending the $25 million over the next five years on our existing parks as well as identified funds for Lake Kensington Park and, and nature park design and many other things that we have planned in our park system. So hopefully that helps as far as the action. It's just really, are we going to bond or are we not?
No. And that's a perfect example. I mean, for gosh's sake, this is the second day on the job and we're already like just crossing the aisle. But it's including the, the new person involved because they could give us a different way.
Absolutely.
And I understand we're frustrated, Mayor. I understand we've been waiting four years, going on five years for something to break to, you know, break dirt on. But at the same time, there are other parks in our cities that have not really been identified. Look at Vista Park, for example, it's been sitting there for years. We could tap into that. We can tap into Greg, getting Greg Park, Park upgraded. What I've been hearing constantly about Steeplechase Park, you know, the lights and so forth. I understand we've got $33 million or whatever it is. So it may not just be one area of town where we build a complex. It could be just a matter of different areas of improvements to bring different facilities and possibly use StanTech for those types of designs. I just think that it's, it, that we're again pulling back on the bond, but we're in a hurry to brick shovel on, on a specific item when, again, let's look at the whole reality of everything. We have somebody new, they can come in and bring in a designer, same thing, StanTech. And if there's different areas where we can focus on improving the parks around the city, whether it's adding pickleball downtown, we're adding basketball courts, additional basketball courts on the east side, what I've been hearing a lot, it's, it's been neglected for years. So it's just looking at that bigger picture. I mean, I know the money is there and maybe we feel it's just burning in our wallet. But again, it's, it's just a matter strategically, making sure that we do something great because in the end.
Mayor.
Mayor Britton.
I agree with you. I think, you know, the 25 million we have identified to invest back into our, our old parks is great, but I don't really think that it's, that the dollars are burning in our pocket. I think what our concern is that dollars don't increase, bond dollars don't increase, but material goes up, labor goes up, design goes up. And I think that's what our concern appears, but I, I don't think is that we're in a rush to spend because I think collectively as a council, we want to build something that's for the community, right? But we've got to do it in a timely manner. I look back at the original road bond that was passed where some of the roads didn't get built till eight or nine years later and we had to go back and jump into the general fund to finish funding those roads. So I, my concern is that dollars don't increase, bond dollars do not increase, but everything else does increase around it. So just making sure we do this in a timely manner and don't wait two or three years is what my concern is. I'd love to see it happen sooner than later.
I'm entirely confused by what's happening right now. Do we need to take action in order for us to move forward with the outdoor project that we have been working on independently from whether or not we're going to go to bond for an indoor sportsplex?
I think what I'm hearing from the council is.
Can I just get a yes or a no? And then you can.
No, I can't give you a yes or a no, unfortunately. I, I think what I'm hearing is let us do some of this master planning work, come back with a schedule and some options of how to, how to proceed and we'll be glad to do that with the public input I think many of you have asked for. We'll get that, bring it back to you. Also give, you, Mr. Lopez. Also give, you, Mr. Lopez, to get a little time to give you his plan for the park system, the existing park system. We've had many discussions about that. We have a very good plan of things we want to do. We can certainly do that in the next month or two. Come back, have that, give you the public outreach and go from there. I think that's the direction, unless council feels otherwise. But I think that's what I've heard this evening. And it will not include calling a, a bond for the sportsplex on the August 15 meeting.
I, I got that, but you do have a motion in a second, so if we want to retract that.
Yeah.
Heiser.
Sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll retract it.
Can you say it?
I retract my motion.
A second.
All right.
You retract her second.
Motion is retracted. I think the public got their answer, so thank you very much.
Staff has clear direction, Mayor and council, if I can, just for one second. I just want to thank Stantec, who's here, who put in a tremendous amount of work over the last couple of months. Mark Maldonado is on the, is on the call, but we, yeah, we haven't had, had him voice in. And then also Hunnun, who did a tremendous amount of work, and our own staff, who over the past couple of months has done an amazing amount of work. So I just want to thank them and thank you all for giving clear direction. And we're excited at the direction where we're going with our parks.
All right, thank you. Next up is Agenda Item Number Six. Receive a report, hold a discussion, provide staff direction regarding the results of the cost of services and rate study for the city's water and wastewater utilities, completed by the Raftellus Financial Consultants, Inc. Mr. Mohit.
So we're going to change gears a little bit, Mayor. So, thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. For the record, I'm Pervaz Mohit, City's Director of Finance. Just to give you a little background, on February 6th of this year, the City Council approved a contract with Raftellus Financial Consultants, Inc. to conduct a cost of service and rate study for the city's water and wastewater utilities. Raftellus is a known national firm with expertise in conducting cost of service and rate studies for water and wastewater utility systems, especially those that are owned by and operated by municipalities. The primary objective, after everything is said and done, the core objective of this study boils down to two things. One, what is the total cost of operating the city's water and wastewater utility systems? And two, how should those costs be recovered through rates from our customer classes? So what you will hear today will answer those two primary questions. While the study objective is pretty straightforward, the study, however, involves detailed examination and analysis of the city's demand characteristics and cost responsibilities for its water and wastewater utility systems. With that, I'm now going to introduce Ms. Angie Flores. She's a Vice President with Raftellus Financial. She'll go over the study results, but at a very high level in summary. So with that, here's Angie. Thank you.
Thank you, Pervaz. Mayor, Mayor Protem and council, I am Angie Flores. I'm Vice President with Raftellus. Glad to be here. We've been working with your city staff since about March of this year, when we started to work on the cost of service and rate study. As Pervaz said, our scope of work included looking at your enterprise fund for the utility, looking at your current costs. We also looked at some historical data related to consumption, looked at developing a forecast over a five-year period. I will be presenting the results of that study. Maybe? So in my presentation, I'm going to go over the review. I'm going to review the results of the rate study. We'll provide you with some rate recommendations and then discuss next steps. As Pervaz noted, this is high level. I won't be going into a whole lot of detail in the, into the numbers. In our coming, in the coming meeting, you will get a draft of the report that will have more detail if you're interested in cost of service and rate modeling. So this slide really provides you with our five-step process that we follow in completing our rate studies. We like to present this in a pyramid form, because really each of the steps is, provides us a foundation to go on to the next step, and they build on each other up to that fifth step. In Step One, where we look at the financial objectives and the pricing objectives of the study, in this step, we really spend time with your staff to get an understanding of what some of the challenges are for the utility and what you might be facing. As we came to find out pretty early on, when we were proposing on the study, and of course, I live right up the street in Austin, I knew that Kyle was having significant growth in your syst, in your city, in your utility. So one of the first items that came up was your capital improvement plan and the need for significant capital needs, not just to serve your current city, your current customers, but to be able to serve some of the growth. The capital improvement plan over the five-year period is estimated at $338 million. So in looking at that plan, it was important for us to consider how those projects would be funded and, and really help in prioritizing those projects. So we've been working closely with staff to review those capital improvement plans. One of the other challenges, which has been mentioned here today, is your water supply needs. You've got increasing costs as it relates to water supply. And so obviously, that also needed to be considered in that five-year forecast. Finally, the other thing was that the city had not undertaken a study like this in the past. And so it was important for us to evaluate where the demand is being put on your system. How are your customer classes using your system? I.e. your residential customers, your commercial customers, and your multifamily customers. So we did take a deep dive into the historical consumption of your classes and then walked through an industry standard allocation of the cost of service. In looking at pricing objectives, and these pricing objectives really help us to determine how, you know, what's important to the utility and how they price the service of water and wastewater. And this really comes back to how you develop your rate structures, how you, you know, what are the pricing signals you're trying to send? For example, in your current water structure, you do have a tiered rate structure where you pay more if you use more water. So those are the kinds of things that we consider in these pricing objectives. In a pricing objectives evaluation that we did with your staff, these were the three most important objectives that your staff identified were important for this study. They include revenue stability, conservation pricing, and affordable essential use. So these were the three primary objectives that we've taken into account as we've gone through this process. So Step Two is where we develop and we look at your financial forecast. We look at your current costs, i.e. your FY25 budget. And we look at your, again, that five-year CIP to determine what those forecasted costs will be. You'll notice in this slide, this is the water and wastewater financial plan, with water being on the top and wastewater on the bottom. What's important to note here is that if you don't do any rate increases, you can see there that that gray line there represents your revenues for the five-year forecast. And it's showing a, really a shortfall in the recovery of your costs. So your rates, your existing rates will not recover the costs for that five-year period. And just to orient you with the graph, we're showing here your O&amp;M expenses, your transfers for cash-funded capital, and future debt service. So you can really see here that the light blue line, the light blue bars there represent the debt service related to funding your, your $338 million capital plan. So if we were to do nothing, this is where your operating reserve would end up. You would end up with a negative operating reserve by FY29. Your current operating reserve policy is at, set at 25% of O&amp;M and debt service. So in the next step, which is the, the third step, where we start to look at what we call the cost of service, and this is where we start to look at how your customers, you know, what demand they put on your system. We really just look at one year. And so we are looking at FY25. And so you can see here that your revenue requirement for water is increasing from 18.2 million in FY24 to 23.5 million in '25. You can see here that the main drivers include water supply, which, as I mentioned earlier, was one of those challenges that we had identified early on in the study. Some of the other increases include increases in your water operations costs and engineering. So we did the same for wastewater. The wastewater revenue requirement, i.e. your costs, your total costs, are increasing from 11.27 to 14.28. And I'll mention here that although you've got your capital plan, we're really not seeing those increases in FY25 yet. Most of those costs are starting to be spent in FY26. So for FY25, these are the costs that make up your FY25 cost of service. So what is cost of service? So when we go through our cost of service analysis, we really look at your revenue requirements and, and break them up into these buckets that you see here. So we break them into supply, your base costs or delivery costs. The costs related to extra capacity are peaking. So as you know, in the summertime, residential customers will irrigate their lawns and use more water. And you, as a utility, must be prepared to provide that service for that peaking. So that's that peaking cost bucket there. And then finally, we've got two other buckets that include meter maintenance and customer service. Once those buckets, the costs are broken up in that way, then how we charge them to the customers is then getting into rate design, which is then Step Four. And so here is then where we distribute all of those costs down to the customer classes. So one analogy we like to use as it relates to customer service, that one of my colleagues likes to describe, it's, it's one of those, like, when you go to dinner with your family or with friends, at the end of the night, when you get the bill, you split up that bill based on, if I had a steak, I pay for my steak. If somebody had a hamburger, they pay for that hamburger. So the same thing for our water cost of service. We want to make sure that your customer classes are based on the demand they're putting on your system. So then for wastewater, we go through the same analysis here. For wastewater, we use, we have three buckets. We have your wastewater flow, your BOD, and your TSS. And so finally, just like water, those get allocated to the customer classes based on their demand. So our overall recommendations, and, and I'll get into really the Step Four, which is the rate design. But our overall recommendations is that you implement the FY25, 2025 rate adjustment. We're recommending no rate adjustments to your outside-city-limit customers at this time. We also recommend that we continue to review your revenue requirement annually for the next three years. And the reason for this is, as we mentioned, your capital plan that we have in place in the model today is pretty significant. And some of those costs in that plan are really high-level estimates. And so we didn't feel comfortable recommending future rate increase plan that would cover a longer period than just FY25, until we have a better handle on what those final costs might look like. In addition, by waiting on the next three years, this will allow for clarity of the PUC rulings for the outside-city-limit customers, which will allow us to potentially adjust their rates as needed in future years. And so obviously, all of those future investments, making sure that, that all your customer classes, including OCL, are covering their costs, will help the utility overall, over the five-year period. So again, this is, this is, reflects our Stage Four evaluation and our recommendation for water rates. This represents the recommended increase to the water monthly fixed charge. All of your classes pay this fixed charge, and it's by meter size. So the larger the meter, the more you pay that, the higher the fixed charge that you pay. Here, we're proposing a 9% increase to the monthly fixed charge. And here, I'll start going into the customer classes. And again, all of these are based on the cost of service analysis that we did and based on how your customers use your system. These are the adjustments that we're recommending for the volumetric rates for water. These maintain the same tiers that you currently have in place. We are recommending that in some possible, in the next couple of years, that we might want to look at some of these rate structures and determine, you know, whether or not there's ways that we might be able to better send pricing signals to encourage conservation. These are the recommended increasing, increases to those blocks. And then these are the recommended water volumetric rates for your other classes. You will notice here that we broke out multifamily from commercial. And then you also have an irrigation class. So for multifamily, they would be seeing a 31% increase, which translates to $2.80 per thousand gallons per month. For commercial, they're seeing a $1.33 increase, and the irrigation, $3.81. Here is taking that monthly fixed charge along with the volumetric rate. This is the bill impact for a 5,000-gallon user. You can see that it's a $7.38 increase for that 5,000-gallon user, which by the way, represents your, the average consumption for your residential class. And then these are the bill impacts for your other classes. The consumption that we're showing in each graph is there, is the average consumption for that particular class. So the multifamily class uses, on average, per month, about 400,000 gallons. Commercial uses 64,000, and irrigation 35,000. And these are the rate increases for that average bill based on the rates that I presented.
So just to get back, so is the amount of water triggering the increase? Or is it the rate triggering the increase in cost? Is it both things?
It's the, the increase in the rate, the increase in the, the bill impact or in the bill is related to the increase in the rate, the rate structure. But this is based on somebody that uses 400,000 gallons, for instance, for the multifamily.
So they're, they're paying for more, more water use, they're paying more- So they're, they're paying for more, more water used, they're paying more. Okay.
Well, on your multifamily, you have, let me go back here, you have a uniform rate. So for, for your multifamily and commercial class, the cost per thousand gallons is the same, but yes, they'll pay more the more water they use. But the fee won't go up like it does for residential.
Okay. Sorry.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So then for wastewater, again, just like in water, you have a monthly fixed charge that all of your classes pay. We are recommending a 5% increase in that fixed monthly charge, going from 2177 to And then for the volumetric charges, again, here, we've broken out multifamily from commercial. In this situation, the residential class is actually seeing a decrease in the volumetric portion of their bill. They pay based on their winter average consumption. And then for multifamily and commercial, they pay for their actual water consumption. So their rates are going up by $3.48 for multifamily and $2.80 per thousand for commercial. And again, these are the bill impacts for those customer classes. Now, I will point out that we are showing, you do have a group of customers that pay a flat charge for sewer. Those are customers that are not on your water system, and so you charge them a flat fee. So their charge is increasing by the same percentage as your residential class. So here are the benchmarks. We looked at and compared your existing rates and the recommended rates to some of your neighboring cities, as well as some investor-owned utilities that are in the area. You're currently the fourth highest. With these rate recommendations for residential, you would move up, you know, above Buta. I will say that several of the cities on this chart are undergoing rate studies as we speak. And in fact, for instance, Georgetown, their council considered rate increases a couple of weeks ago, and will be going to adoption probably in the next couple of weeks as well.
How long are we going to hold the rates? Is it going to be changing again the following year, or do you have it over five years to hold these rates?
No, our recommendation is that we reevaluate where we are next year. As I showed in the graph, there, there is a likelihood that those costs are going to continue to increase. And so, you know, as we evaluate this year over year, there, there's likely a potential for future rate increases. We just wanted to hold off so that we're, you know, certain, so that all of the moving parts are, are more definitive in the coming years.
If I could just amplify that for a moment, too. I think, as Angie pointed out, the capital plan, we'll have refinement of that as we go over the next year, and we'll get more information and better estimates of that. We'll also have a chance to update our impact fees once we have our new water master plan or wastewater master plan. We're going to be putting those numbers into our, a new impact fee study. And as you may recall, just a few months ago, we raised those impact fees. We'll likely be coming back and recommending that you raise those again based on that new capital plan that'll be put together. In addition to that, we have the out-of-city limit rates and a number of other things we'll be looking at, but you have to put all those things together, they're moving. And when we have answers on each one of those, then it helps us isolate what type of rate impact we will have. But it's a growing system, growing city, you will likely have rate increases over the next several years. We're going to do everything we can to mitigate those and minimize them, but there's still a number of pieces to, to solve as we go through it. Hopefully that helps to answer the question.
Yes, go ahead. Sure, thank you.
Thank you. So these are the benchmarks for multifamily. And here you'll notice that we have some notes here about the, some of the neighboring communities, for instance, Buta. They don't have separate classes for residential and commercial. Everybody pays the same rate structure. So we've just noted that in the, on the graph. The Georgetown, for instance, has a separate multifamily class, so we've denoted that also in the, in the graph. So the bars outlined in red represent Kyle existing and Kyle recommended. And this, again, is at, based on a 400,000 gallon user. So for commercial, this, you can see here, again, the bars outlined in red, the Kyle existing and the Kyle recommended.
Brian, when was the last time we did a study, that the city of Kyle did a study for how much we were charging our commercial users?
A cost of service study like this? To our knowledge, I don't believe we've ever done one, and that's, at least Perveza's time or my time, we have not done a cost of service study. This is the first one we've done, and so that's why you see some of the variations in what the costs were versus the rates and what they're recovering.
So in essence, commercial users were probably getting a big discount while the residents were probably taking on the majority of the burden of the water.
Right.
There's no study going on?
Right, so I think what we're saying here is that the commercial rates, the existing ones and the ones in the past, have not paid their full share of their costs, and single family and other classes of customers have paid more than they needed to because of that. That's, that's what the intent behind this is.
That's what I was thinking. It just seems like commercials getting a really good bargain there for a long time.
Right, it's, it's kind of like, I think Angie's example, you paid a little bit for her steak even though you had a burger.
I have a quick question. I know at some point, we discussed that multifamily is considered commercial. Is that why the rates that they have in the previous, like, two previous slides?
So...
The next one.
Let me go back here. So one of the things that we discussed with staff, you know, as I mentioned, one of the priorities was to really look at, you know, how your customers were using the system. And as Brian pointed out, we did find that your residential class was paying more than their share in the commercial and multifamily weren't. And so one of the things that we did was to break out the multifamily from the commercial. And so that's why you're seeing here, the multifamily, once we broke them out, needed a bigger increase than the commercial, once we did that separation.
Okay. I didn't know they were still, thank you.
So the final benchmark is irrigation. And again, these are only showing the cities that have separate irrigation classes. So you can see here where Kyle sits. Again, I will point out that all of the four other systems are currently, well, with the exception of San Antonio, but New Braunfels, Georgetown, and Round Rock, and Round Rock has already proposed a rate increase, Georgetown has proposed a rate increase, and New Braunfels is undergoing a rate study currently. So everybody is in the mode of evaluating their costs. Costs have increased. Everybody has capital plans, capital needs that need to be funded through their utilities, so they're taking a close look at that as well. So again, our recommendations are to evaluate the revenue needs over the next three years, maintain the status quo for OCL, i.e., don't change them, and then finally, implement the FY 2025 rate recommendation based on the cost of service. And so the next steps will be to finalize the report and then consider adoption at the recommended rates with your budget on August 20th and September 3rd. With that, I will answer any further questions.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any further questions or comments? It's very thorough and exhaustive.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, I guess we will see you back for the conclusion.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next up is the consent agenda. We have to pull item 16. We're asked to move items 25 and 26 to the front. I'm assuming that means we want to vote on those separately. Is there any other items that we want to pull from the consent agenda to discuss?
What was it, two items, 25 and what?
Did 26.
And I was going to bring up 34.
That's not on consent, so we're just on, we're just on consent right now.
25.
25 is coming.
Yeah, 21, 26.
All right, so if there's anything outside of 16, 25, and 26, I'll make the motion.
And 23, what are we going to do about 23?
Do you want to pull it?
Yeah, because we have to, it's related to what we did earlier.
All right.
All right, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22, and 24.
Second, all right, motion by Mayor Protem, second by the mayor that we approved the consent agenda, all items except for 16, 23, 25, and 26. Is there a discussion on that motion?
Just have a question about 20.
All right.
Should I ask it now?
Sure.
Who's there, who's here for number 20? Zintec Tech LLC?
Hello.
Good evening.
Yeah, I just wanted to get more information of what is this Focus 3D scanner going to be used for? I'm assuming it's autorex, I mean, but what is it? I mean, how is it going to help us get better reports made and data on the accidents, collisions?
So my understanding from working with, this is a purchase for the police department, I'm going to look and see if there's anyone from police behind me, and I don't see Chief Barnett, but this is a, a scanning system or scanning software that will allow us to create 3D renderings of, of accident, of accident scenes, like traffic accidents. So it will help with our ability to do investigation in those areas.
And clear accident areas. So once an accident occurs, certainly if there's a fatality or a major injury, that intersection or roadway has to be shut down. This is technology that allows us to quickly map that area, see what's occurred, and then open the roadway more quickly, and helps with the investigation, as Rosie mentioned.
Okay, yeah, I thought it was like a, a look at the collision and I guess examine where were the, the collision points that occurred on the vehicle. I, I thought it was about helping in accidents on the roadway, but, yeah, that's all that I had, that's, that's what I had.
All right, any other questions on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. Next up will be agenda item number 25, second reading, consider approval of an ordinance, repealing ordinance 1310, which amended the city's budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024 to authorize mayor, city council members to access the health insurance program on the same terms as full-time city employees, and amended ordinance 1043 related to city council health insurance access. Ms. Alcorn, read.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. For the record, Amy Alcorn Reed, City Attorney. I did make a couple of changes to this presentation since Saturday, so I'm just going to kind of go to that slide so that you can see. I think really I only made the one change, was that at the meeting on Saturday, the city council did amend the originally proposed ordinance to add an additional amendment to ordinance 1043, and that removes the language that had previously allowed the mayor and council to obtain health insurance if they paid the full cost out of pocket.
All right. Does anybody have any comments?
I think the motion was to eliminate the entire language.
Of 1043? The entire language of 1043 sets your salary, your stipend, everything. Would you like us to repeal that altogether, or just the section regarding the health insurance?
The entire insurance.
Yeah, that's what it does. It repeals, it removes all language from that ordinance.
Okay.
About insurance.
Sounds good. So with that motion, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to consider the approval of the ordinance repealing ordinance 1310, which is the, according to what we have as written on the agenda.
A second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approved agenda item number 25. As presented, is there a discussion on the motion? Councilwoman Heiser.
Yeah, well, Councilmember Tobias, one of the things that I wanted to, to bring up here, seeing as I wasn't part of that discussion, is removing the, the amendment from the original ordinance of 1310 so that we could have those two votes separately. If I was informed correctly, when the compensation committee met in 2021, part of, one of the recommendations was for, 2022, excuse me, was it? It was, okay. One of the recommendations was for council to have access to the insurance if they were to pay the full cost, and council decided to not take that up. And so I under, I understand that the desire to repeal 1310 due to the citizen petition, but to me, to go back and undo something that we, and to my knowledge, not a single council member actually had taken up that insurance, but what we're doing is now eliminating that option for future council members. And just to make, let go on record, it's not something that I'm going to take up. I can't afford it, so I'm not going to. But to undo that, knowing that, and I have talked to some folks in this room who signed the petition to repeal 1310, and removing county, mayor, and council's access to the insurance, even if they paid for it, was not their intention either. So I would like to, to consider amending that motion, to have those two votes separately, because I'm not sure what I can do at this point, now that there's a motion on the table. So that is what I would ask.
Can I ask a question about that? Do the part-time employees have access to the insurance if they were to pay out of pocket, 100%?
I don't believe, I don't believe that's, that they do. We have just a few of those, I want to say, just a handful of employees in that situation.
Then I would think, at the very least, council members shouldn't have that option if the employees of the city don't have it.
And if I can respond to that, Mr. Heiser.
Sure.
I understand the concern and the issue of that, but it kind of also goes back to what Mayor Mitchell said about the spirit of the charter. We are possibly, of course, we every three years bring back a compensation committee that we select as a group. They will review everything from our compensation, how much we get at the end of the month. They're going to probably review also our credit card. They may increase or decrease, we don't know. They may also consider possibly adding this back on as a recommendation for the next year, but let's let them, allow them to do that. For us to just go ahead and just amending that was the whole, the, the whole issue on my end, when we're going to be having this, all this time that we've spent on this, Mr. Heiser, and the, and the many hours of, of city staff that had to work on this, in probably less than six to eight months, we're going to be talking about this again. So it's a matter of that principle of, of following that procedure, and if the compensation committee looks at either increasing or decreasing our stipend to reflect the insurance, then when they give us the final recommendation, when that is next year, is when we can vote on future council members getting approved the, the cost of the, the insurance. But to Ms. Parsley's point, it's true. If we don't have city employees that are part-time, not allowed to, or not qualified to have that, again, and I know, Ms. Harris, you've mentioned before, everybody has access to free healthcare, or to healthcare. Everybody has access to healthcare. But how can I tell that to these city employees? But how can I tell that to these city employees? What makes us different than them? What makes us different than them? Is it because we're elected officials? Okay, like I said, we come and go. It takes one vote from me, and I'm out. But it's also being respectful to our office and what we stand for. And who's to say, Mr. Heiser, this comes back next year? And they do look at the numbers, and they could maybe bring this suggestion. We can then vote on it then. And for all you know, it could pass through.
Any further discussion?
I just say one last thing, is that we talk a lot about trying to make decisions today to put future councils in better positions to make decisions. And yes, you're right, we do come and go. And I heard your commentary from the last meeting, but the residents stay and remain, and that is true. But this is a decision now that you are taking away from future councils.
Didn't say that.
No, you are, because at the end, when the compensation committee comes back, who then takes the recommendations and decides whether or not to implement them?
That's why it's up to them, sir. That is why it is up to them.
This was, but this was a recommendation made by the compensation committee.
All points have been made, all points have been made.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries six to one. Next up is agenda item 26, second reading. Consider approval of an ordinance amending the policy for members of the city council regarding city business expenses charged on city credit cards and requests for reimbursement by city expenses, which was adopted by ordinance 1231. Ms. Trulow.
So, this is, good evening, Rosie Trulow, Director of Administrative Services. This is the same policy that you saw on Saturday. The only change that you'll see reflected is adding an exhibit four to the policy, which speaks to the monthly expense reconciliation form that was requested. Otherwise, it is unchanged.
Does anybody have any questions, comments? Motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the item 26 as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, second by Councilmember Harris, that we approve agenda item 26 as presented. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item 16, consider approval of a resolution finding public convenience and necessity in authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn, if necessary, a 6.69 acre, 6.699 acre of tract land owned by SSSP Realty LLC. The only reason for pulling this is because we're a specific agenda item. Does, do y'all want this presented, or specific language that I need to use in the motion? Do you want this presented? All right, Ms. Mites.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item tonight is about Button Creek Road right-of-way and property acquisition. This is the parcel that we are seeking to acquire. It is owned by Triple S Double P Realty. We are purchasing the entire tract for a portion of the Button Creek Road Bond Project Right-of-Way, which is highlighted in blue, and expansion of the existing Lehman Water Utilities Facility. Expansion could include additional pumps, ground storage, chlorine, facility lines, et cetera. We obtained an appraisal of the property from a qualified appraisal, and after making a bona fide offer based on the appraisal, the city's efforts to acquire the needed easements through negotiation have been unsuccessful. And so, tonight for you, we are asking you to adopt by resolution a PCN, Public Convenience and Necessity, and it determines whether or not the acquisition of the property is necessary to effectuate a particular public use. And if we're unable to reach a negotiated agreement, the PCN authorizes the city to initiate eminent domain proceedings. And tonight, the PCN before you does find that the Button Creek Road project and the Water Utilities Facility project are necessary and required to promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, and that acquisition of the property is required to complete the project.
And this does not displace any residents, correct?
Correct, yes, yes.
Any questions for Ms. Mites, Councilwoman Tobias?
Yes, thank you. Could you just briefly explain to the residents, especially those that are watching, what this would be possibly used for? And also, if there would be any aesthetics that would be added to minimize any kind of negative effect? Because this does back up to South Lake Ranch subdivision.
Yes, sir. I might have Tim come up and speak to the facilities that we have planned for expansion on this property, but we do realize that this is in the middle of an established neighborhood. We want to be good neighbors. We want to make sure the facility is attractive. It has great landscaping, great fencing, and is just maybe a great amenity, you know, maybe art or something. When you're coming down Button Creek Road, you can see something that looks really beautiful for the community, the neighborhood there. We want to be a really good neighbor. So, we have that in the plans for this facility in addition to some of the ancillary uses that we need to help expand our water facility there.
Okay. Will there be any kind of noise or vibrations that would be utilized, like all night, all day kind of things, where residents that are backed up there will be hearing in the evenings and so forth? We hate to have like another situation like at Water Leaf.
Tim Sanford, Assistant Director, for the record. To answer your question, just to highlight what Mrs. Mites had already stated, we will be installing some concrete masonry fencing as part of this project if it were to move forward. That's part of our standard moving forward as we're implementing our new projects. We do have a sound requirement per our ordinance. I believe it's 75 decibels at the property line. So, we will definitely maintain that with any equipment that we do install. And we would definitely be sensitive to any neighbors. With this size of the property, I anticipate that that 75-decibel ordinance should be no problem for us to meet.
Just like to add, yes, important that we have great aesthetics there, since it is across a major high school. There'll be a lot of traffic, walkers, pedestrians. So, as we build and the road here gets better, I guess, will we also see a lot of lighting in there, though, in this public facility? Will they have a lot of, you know, lighting, like?
There will be some lighting that will be required just to meet our security measures.
Yeah.
And part of that is, you know, what we're bringing forward here in the near future with, you know, security cameras, lighting, and what's appropriate and necessary.
Right.
For areas that are closest to divisions, there are some protocols that we do become a little bit lenient and sensitive in the direction those lights are pointed for the residents, and so that we're not shining those directly into the homes and then things like that.
Exactly, because I can already hear the concerns of like what gets put in there, and as Mr. Tobias said, the residents that are already there around their quality of life.
I think we can achieve security lighting with also possibly complying with dark skies. I don't, I don't think that should be a problem for us. And we'd want the lighting to be attractive and amenity as well, something that, you know, gave security but didn't cause light pollution onto the neighbors there.
Thank you.
And may I add something? I just want to make sure that, you know, everybody knows that although we are doing eminent domain, there is nobody currently living in any of these dwellings, correct?
There is nobody living in these dwellings.
Thank you.
Nor are there any businesses or any activity in these buildings.
Right.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All right, I move that the city of Kyle authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire 6.699 acre of tract of land owned by SSSPP Realty LLC and described in agenda item 16 for the purpose of constructing and operating public roadway improvements and public water utility infrastructure improvements.
Second.
All right, motion by mayor, second by Mayor Protem. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, we're going to pull up agenda item 34, considering possible action.
Mayor, 23?
Oh, did we pull 23 also?
Somebody pulled 23.
Oh, yeah, I said, what were we going to do about 23?
Me, he wanted to pull 23.
Okay, all right. Brian, are you wanting us to take up the Hunden contract and approve it?
Yes, I can give you very quickly on that. The vast majority of that, those funds have been spent on the work they've done for the project that we were just talking about for the Sportsplex. We can go through a short presentation on that, but that work has primarily been done.
Okay, so. All right, do you have anything else you want to add to it?
No, I just want.
Motion to approve on 23. All right, motion by mayor, second by Councilwoman Heiser. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, now we got you, Ms. Lyons. Considering possible action to direct city manager and staff to obtain quotes for mosquito spraying and prevention around neighborhood detention pond areas. Mr. Zuniga.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I was just received a lot of questions about our detention ponds, specifically when they're very close to some neighborhoods. This one that was shown to us in the images is right behind the library, which I did walk out and look at with Ms. Lyons. And as she said, she's been taking care of it by herself. And then mosquitoes are, you know, they can get you sick, they cause infections. And it's, Brian, is it possible for the city to kind of look at obtaining a quote for some of this mosquito larvae, you know, prevention? So that, the biggest months that mosquitoes tend to build their larva is September and August. So, maybe kind of look at, you know, the areas like Stipplechase that have the detentions. I think what I heard was there's two, there's two, there's two hotbeds that we have. One of them is behind the library, and one of them is somewhere in Stipplechase, where mosquitoes tend to live.
We could certainly bring you back a report and some options of how to treat mosquitoes in the area, if that's what the request is.
That would be what I would like to make the.
Right, Mayor Protem.
Yeah. Yeah, Brian, just want to recap on that one, right there behind the library comes up. That detention comes in from Greg Clark Park back. This was brought to my attention a couple of years ago, and staff went back, and where the concrete ends, there's some rock barriers. And staff was supposed to bring those rock barriers down and allow that water to flow freely. I was told that was done, so seeing standing water here is kind of concerning to me. It feels like maybe the concrete shifted or something?
I can't speak to it, sir. I'll be happy to look at it.
No, I'm just bringing that aware, so maybe we could get staff or someone that was here at the time when this was happening. But that concrete comes all the way down, and it ends on a rock surface. And that rock surface was taller than the concrete. So, just making sure that that hasn't changed or shifted. So that way, it allows water to drink.
Sure, be glad to look at it.
This is probably the second time we look at it.
Councilman Harris.
If we're going to get quotes for mosquito spraying, I'd like to also.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble here.
If we're going to get quotes for mosquito spraying, I'd like to also have an evaluation of why the mosquitoes are there in the first place. Because if you spray for mosquitoes, you kill a lot of other things that are very important in our environment, and it affects birds and wildlife, and it can affect human health when you spray as well. Although, they will say it doesn't, it does. There are a lot of things that can be done to minimize mosquitoes, and the drainage is definitely one, keeping down the weeds, the tall things, making sure that there are no breeding areas. But it may be that we have to spray for mosquitoes, sometimes you have to do that. But generally, that is done when your mosquito traps are finding mosquitoes with West Nile or some other mosquito-borne pathogen.
Councilman Parsley.
Can we make sure that if we are going to do this assessment, that we address all the detention ponds in the city of Kyle? I don't know if there are, do we have any that are in neighborhoods that are managed by HOAs? And then, what would happen in those cases?
Yeah, we have quite a few that are managed by private property, but we can certainly get you a full accounting of what's out there, what's being done, and options.
And then, just to have back, if we were to go ahead and spray an area, like what would be, you know, get some sort of quotes? How much would that be for the city to make sure that we are addressing all the ponds?
Well, and also, there is an issue with how long that spraying lasts to deter the mosquitoes. And it's about a week, because mosquitoes are, travel for miles. They repopulate the area if the problem is not resolved that you had sprayed for. So, every two weeks, we can't do that. That's not healthy for the people or the environment. We need to resolve the problem.
I'll see if I can trap one, bring it in here and show you.
There are natural ways, so yeah, Brian, just, we could just get some quotes.
I'll get you a full report of some options and how we could handle it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, there, I know I'm out of order, I got to bring this up. This gentleman here has had COVID. He's up there sweating and just.
All right, Mr. Connell, I'm sorry, you're out of order. I appreciate what you're saying. We're actually going to take a 10-minute break right now, so we're going to reconvene at 9:35. Thank you.
Was he cleared for COVID before he came here tonight?
Yes, I was.
You were?
I was.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being worried.
Okay, good, I need a stretch really bad.
All right, it's 9:35. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Next up is agenda item number 27, public hearing concerning the expansion of the boundaries of tax increment reimbursement zone number four pursuant to the previous provisions of Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code. Ms. Libby.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmember Stephanie Libby, Rose Fulbright. Our firm serves as bond counsel to the city. Tonight, you all are going to have a public hearing concerning the expansion of Taurus Number Four. We are going to ask that council open the public hearing and continue the public hearing until September 3rd, which is the next city council meeting where we would have the continuation of the public hearing and consider action. We're in the process of putting together the updated project and finance plan to cover the projects that would be financed by the expanded tours. Primarily, that includes the expansion of Go Fourth Road, which we've previously discussed with council. We're working with P3 to get that plan finalized. After we have a good draft of the plan, we're also going to present that plan to the commissioners' court, because the commissioners' court has indicated a willingness to participate in this expanded zone. So, once we get their projects identified, their participation set as it relates to Go Fourth Road, we'll have that final plan ready to come and present to council.
Okay. Is this the item that we held open, the public hearing from the last meeting? So, it's still open from the last meeting. All right, so if there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this item and bring it back at the September 3rd city council meeting. All right, motion by mayor, second by Mayor Protem. We postpone agenda item 27 until September 3rd. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries five to zero. All right, next up is agenda item number 28. This item has a public hearing. Consider approval of a resolution approving the Community Development Block Grant Program Five-Year Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2024. Ms. Sharp.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, tonight we have the Community Development Block Grant Program Five-Year Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan. And then, we will have a public hearing on this item after we get through this presentation.
Okay.
So, you may remember, this was approved previously on June 18th. Afterwards, it was discovered that one of the required public hearings and public comment periods were improperly noticed. They were not compliant with HUD guidelines or our adopted citizen particip- noticed. They were not compliant with HUD guidelines or our adopted citizen participation plan. So we have since done an additional public comment period. And then tonight, we'll have the additional public hearing as required by HUD. Upon completion of the public comment period, which was July 2nd through August 2nd, and then tonight's public hearing, all of the requirements will be satisfied for the consolidated plan and annual action plan. And then we will submit to HUD prior to the August 16th deadline. None of the content of the consolidated plan and annual action plan have changed since it was previously approved on the 18th. So here are the dates that we held community workshops. We held one in October, one in April. And then we, like I said, are having the public comment or public hearing tonight. And that was added at HUD's direction as the community workshop held in April did not meet the requirements for a public hearing as required by HUD. This public hearing was published in the local newspaper as required by our citizen participation plan and suggested by HUD requirements. And then we had two public comment periods. And then we held an additional one, July 3rd through August 2nd. And any comments received during that period will be incorporated into the document. So far, we have not received any comments. If any are received during the public hearing, we will incorporate those into the consolidated plan prior to submitting to HUD. And then this is just kind of a rundown that we've been through before. We're an entitlement community. We'll start receiving funds in October. And then I'll kind of skip through a lot of this. We'll be getting about $266,000, primarily spending a lot of that on sidewalks. And, here we go. So we do plan to submit the consolidated plan and annual action plan to HUD by August 13th, which is next week, a couple of days ahead of the deadline. And we will review, HUD will review and coordinate with staff to update in accordance with CDBG guidelines. And then, once approved, the city will be eligible to draw down funds beginning October 1. So that is all I have. We also have the consultants, our Dura here, if y'all have any questions for them. If not, we're recommending approval. And like I said, there is a public hearing as well.
Thank you. This item has a public hearing. So if there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing now. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Sharp or comments?
I guess I have a quick comment. Kayla, can we look at that table that said like some of the priorities with the community block grant?
This one?
Yeah. So if you look at number 10, Senior Center, Library, Rec Center, I guess that was like one of the top 10 priorities. But what, was there a promise that the seniors were going to have some participation in this community block? I think I remember hearing, but the money has been designated to sidewalks.
So I'm not aware that any specific money was ever promised to the, specifically the Kyle area senior zone. It is potentially an eligible activity for the CDBG program. Maybe not a senior center, but there are some eligible activities that they might be interested in, which is why it was included in our needs assessment. And this was the outcome of that needs assessment and kind of where it ranked on the priority for residents.
Is this a one-time funding amount? Or is it over, is it each year for five years?
So the, the grant is a yearly grant. And each year, ideally, the funding amount will increase. There's a formula that HUD uses to determine the amount of funding cities are eligible to receive each year. And so it would renew each year if we're in accordance with all of their guidelines.
So for a period of five years, then? You, you just renew it every year up to five? Is that what?
No. So this, this can go on, there are cities that have been part of the CDBG program for 50 years. So we can, we can continue going year after year. This kind of outlines our path that we're going to take. It's kind of like a master plan. You update it every few years. So this kind of outlines the next five years, but we are able to kind of make changes to that. There's some requirements for what constitutes minor versus major changes to this consolidated plan.
Right. Yeah. So I do like a lot of the line items in there, like the increased access to grocery stores, senior center, you know, I mean, I think those really are community needs in a community block grant. Just something to consider. I think you, you get the point I'm trying to make. It's, those are the community needs here.
Right. And I think what we're trying to do in the first year is, is designate funds for the number one community need on the list, which is the sidewalks. But as Ms. Sharp pointed out, there's nothing that says we can't modify and add some of the other needs over time. And hopefully, the funding will grow. If we identify some of the critical sidewalk connections that we need to address, once those are done, then we can move on to some of the other priorities and have those funds available for other things. Additionally, any of these items, we can also, in the normal budgeting process, decide to budget funds for, too. This just supplements those funds that we have for other activities.
Okay. That's what I had to ask, the, the funding amount and the reapplication process. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Councilor Tobias.
Yeah, if I could just make that point, when you look at on line item number seven, when it comes to the street lighting. So would this also qualify for updating any lighting that we have in the city? I know that there's some probably neighborhoods that need to have any, some new upgrades with the bulbs and everything like that, especially in Plum Creek. They got some are bright and some are orange. And it's pretty much across, yeah, you know what I'm saying? It's around everywhere. So this would be able to kind of help with some of that, not only just new infrastructure lighting, but existing?
There might be a possibility to allocate some of it for repairs to existing. HUD has very specific guidelines. So if it's going towards repairs, there's usually a lesser amount that you can spend towards that. But it's certainly possible. It's something we could look into. The other thing to keep in mind is that with the Community Development Block Grant Group or Block Grant Program, you're spending a majority of your money in low to median income census blocks. So it has to be spent in certain areas of the city that meet those qualifications.
Yeah, just fleshing up on the lighting of sidewalks, just remembering some of our older neighborhoods, making sure that we're assessing those as well. Sometimes they're forgotten, look honestly. So just making sure that we don't forget our older neighborhoods as well when we're looking at these needs.
Absolutely.
Can't forget where you came from. Sometimes.
Looking, looking for motions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 28.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Zuniga, second by Mayor Pro Tim. Do we approve Agenda Item 28? Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries six to zero. Next up, Agenda Item 29, First Reading, Consider Approval of an Ordinance, admitting Chapter 53 zoning of the Code of Ordinances to rezone approximately 1.5 acres of land from Ag to RS for property located at 1417 Button Creek Road.
Evening, Mayor, Council. I know by the number of slides, it doesn't look like it, but a fairly simple zoning request for you guys tonight. So I'll kind of speed through these. I know it's getting late. So this project location is on Button Creek Road. The highlighted property is in yellow there. The applicant was requesting retail services, possibly develop a food truck court, but they are considering multiple commercial uses. Staff was analyzing the request, found it was not really in compliance with our newly adopted comprehensive plan. So we discussed this issue with the applicant. They were in support of staff recommending a less intense zoning district to P&amp;Z for consideration. So that was kind of what was discussed at our P&amp;Z meeting. So this report's going to outline how we kind of got to our recommendation from to P&amp;Z and to you tonight. So this property is currently zoned agriculture. Again, they were asking for RS. But the property is currently developed with a single-family home, so it's not commercially developed. There is adjacent zoning, agriculture, and retail to each side. So they're kind of bookending this property. You also have some unzoned property. There's an annexation agreement to the north, and then single-family to the south, R1. The adjacent land uses are single-family residential. That's immediate next door, both to the west and east. The applicant also lives next to the subject tract, but he is not part of this rezoning request tonight. So again, the owner intended a mobile food court for the original intent, but they're looking at multiple possibilities. They're open to development. But the mobile food courts were only allowed in RS. So that's why the, the initial request for that RS zoning. So again, here's a zoning map. You can see this property, again, bookended by RS, Ag, Ag, and RS. So when we looked at our comp plan, it called out this area as traditional neighborhood. If you read what that is, it's more pre-suburban development pattern, smaller lots, shorter setbacks. This future land use category allows multiple typologies. So this is kind of new to you, as far as our comp plan. So I kind of wanted to go over some of what those typologies are. So we have residential, mixed use, and non-residential. So this future land use allows single families, ADUs, cottage courts, some live work, and few over. But neighborhood residential, it's very specific on its neighborhood scale, talks about the intensity, light and medium intensities. RS is our most intense zoning district. So staff was a little uncomfortable with the straight RS zoning. You can see, it's not a pocket of neighborhood commercial. This entire area is, sorry, is labeled traditional neighborhood. So some of the other things we looked at were transportation issues and infrastructure in the area. We've got Button Creek Road expansion. And so we're doing some work there, realignment, widening of the, the road a little bit further down from the applicant's location. And then we also have Kyle Parkway and Lehman Road extensions. These are going to be some extensions and connect into the existing road network system. So you can hear, see here, the green highlighted areas are the new proposed roads. The subject tract is in red there. So when we looked at the comprehensive plan, and we looked at only light and medium commercials that are appropriate, city has two zoning categories that would fit that, neighborhood commercial and community commercial. So when we looked at those, we looked at the land uses were the first things. Very similar land uses, but I highlighted some differences. So in neighborhood commercial, you can have restaurants, but no drive-throughs. Community commercial allows a drive-through. Same with gas stations, convenience stores, no fuel sales in neighborhood, allows fuel sales in commercial, community commercial. And then financial institutions without drive-throughs in neighborhood, with drive-throughs in community commercial. And then funeral homes as well. So when we were looking at that, lot size was also a factor. These tracks are fairly narrow, but very deep. So they're over one and a half acres each for one of those sites. Neighborhood commercial has a maximum size of one acre, and that's because we don't want the large commercial developments to kind of show up in those neighborhood commercials. And so when you look at the existing parcels, they're all, again, more than one acre. So the more appropriate would be the community commercial, even though it has a few extra land uses. I know some of that is concerning, but we also have overlays for gas stations. So they're not allowed in certain districts. Community commercial also has additional setbacks for facilities with drive-throughs like restaurants, especially when you're that close to residential neighborhoods. So given the existing land use pattern, the improved road network that the city is anticipating, we recommended to P&amp;Z that community commercial would be the most appropriate zoning district for this. Again, we discussed those uses with the applicant. They are here tonight. And they were on board with that recommendation. So staff recommended to P&amp;Z to rezone from Ag to community commercial instead of the retail services. And they also agreed with, with city staff. So they unanimously, five to zero, voted to rezone and are recommending community commercial tonight to you. So we have some options tonight. The first one is recommend the change from Ag to community commercial as recommended by staff and P&amp;Z. Or you can approve the original retail services request, or you can deny that request altogether. So staff is recommending option one based on comp plan and P&amp;Z recommendations.
Jason, did you, you speak to the applicant about the particular zoning, the community commercial in there? Did you say that they were agreeable to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilor Tobias.
Okay, thank you, real quick. So the adjoining neighbors, neighbors next door, so this just little segment there would be under CC. And you're saying that this fits the comprehension plan on this end?
Yes, sir.
My thing would be is when the neighbors are, if they decide to rezon themselves, would this conflict anything with their current zoning? So let's say the one on the right eventually says, I want to, I want to go retail, you know, I'm ready to maybe possibly move on. And then the person right next to him wants to say, well, I have a bigger lot. I want to use that as residential for a, a new home or whatever. Would any, any three of those collide in the future?
We don't believe so, as long as we keep those less intense zoning districts. I think if we would have stuck some RS in the middle, that may have been problematic for one of the neighbors, because again, we allow all kinds of uses there. But because the comp plan does identify this area as, you know, light to medium, and we allow those type of mixed uses, again, there would be nothing from preventing him from doing residential there. And with, with small retail shop on the bottom and, and apartments over. So we think the area, given the road network and kind of where it's at, this is a good transition. We think those uses will, will be okay. Now, again, the, the existing RS on the ends, that's, that's a little different. Those are there. But for the two adjacent properties, we don't think there'll be any issues long-term.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, years from now, like I think we've had some issues maybe downtown where you had different zoning for different areas, because, you know, all of these are kind of puzzle pieces of people's properties that've owned through the years. And hate for something to be conflicted to where they want to build a retail here, but it doesn't fit with this, but that's what it was zoned as. And just kind of looking ahead of the game on that. So P&amp;Z recommended it? They had no, no issues with, with it at all? Any questions?
No, they, they kind of worked through some of the issues. They had some questions regarding the lot size and what those uses are. So we wanted to make sure that that was clear to y'all. And that's why kind of we added the, the land use chart. Because outside of the funeral home and the drive-through facilities, really on those other uses, they're very similar. And again, community commercial prohibits, you know, your drive-through speakers and microphones. They can't be within so many feet of that residential. So we think there's some, some good built-in protections in that zoning district.
All right, good. Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, just want to say, yeah, definitely, P&amp;Z did a great job of vetting that. But I, I really think, because of the area that we're talking about, there's really no minis out there for those people. So seeing something at a, a light community commercial would probably benefit them a lot. So I, I think this is a great item. I think y'all did a great job of vetting this and coming to a good understanding with the owner. I'm looking at all the RS. The one on the top doesn't really make a lot of sense to me, but I'm like, okay, it's already there. But yeah, I think it's going to be a great amenity to the residence and area. And I have no problem with that. I want to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 29 as presented.
All right, motion by Mayor Pro Tim, second by Councilor Tobias. Do we approve Agenda Item 29? Is there discussion on the motion? Yes, but we no longer have, yeah, full, full board, so.
Yeah, I mean, are they going to have to do like the parking for, is it, are any improvements to the, to the lot?
Yeah, depending on.
Food trucks there?
Well, food trucks won't be allowed under the community commercial. Staff is working on some, some modifications that we may bring at a later date regarding food trucks. But this would allow them some other opportunities for small-scale retail, personal services. But yes, depending on what, what they propose, they'll have to go through the site development plan. So depending on that use, we'll have different parking regs, drainage calculations and previous coverage. So we'll look at all that as part of the site.
Yeah. So I thought you were, they were asking to put in mobile food trucks in there.
That was the original thought process. But they were kicking around a lot of ideas. They didn't have any one set in stone. I think that's probably for most people, it, on the surface seems like a pretty quick use, but there's a lot that goes into those, those mobile food courts. So again, after discussion with the applicant, it was more about providing some, some opportunity for some economic activities that was commercial in nature.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell, I mean, the agriculture is just not going to fit in there anymore, right? I mean, it's, it's right next to the two RS, RS. So, yeah, community commercial would be.
Do you know if there are any requirements for grease traps or anything like that, if they're not going to have any mobile food trucks?
So if they're doing any type of restaurant or food service that connects to our system, then yes, the plumbing code kicks in. They have to design those grease traps based on the size of the restaurant. So, you know, square footage, a, a small mom and pop coffee shop is not going to have a grease trap that's required, this, what a large pizza place would. So the, the engineers will design that. They submit through that building. And we kind of review that as part of the building permit plans to see what size grease trap they need. So they're, depending on the size of the facility, they may need to install an exterior one that gets flushed multiple times a year, but all dependent on, on the actual project itself.
All right, Councilor Harris.
So if they decide that they would like to do food trucks, which actually would be a pretty good use in that area. can they get a special use permit for that?
Well, I don't want to get too far ahead of staff, but we are looking at making some amendments to the the what zones food truck courts are allowed in. Because again, they can be a neighborhood and amenity in the right place. So at some point in the future, we're going to probably look at bringing some changes to allow food courts in more commercial districts than just the RS. But that would most likely be a CUP process or something like that, nothing by right. So again, kind of getting ahead of of the discussion and what what may be coming down the road.
Okay, before before we call for the vote, did we have the public hearing on this? Because we had two in a row with the public hearing. I know I did the one with Caleb, but I've not done this.
No, no, no.
All right, so we need to withdraw the motion just for a second.
That's fine.
All right, is that meaningful, the second? All right, so the motion is withdrawn. There are no objections. This item has a public hearing. So I'm going to open that public hearing now. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just want to say just a reminder that anytime we approve zoning before the build happens, they have to follow all the codes that the city has in place. That's what do you call it, parking spaces? That's anything plumbing related, just anything building material. Building wise, they have to follow all the codes and whatever the city has laid out, it doesn't exempt them from that. So that way we know that in the future. But I just want to make the motion to approve agenda item 29.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Tobias that we approve agenda item 29. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries five to zero. Next up, agenda.
Thank you, Council.
Yeah, thirty, consider first reading, consider approval of ordinances amending the sign and zoning code per chapter twenty-nine and chapter fifty-three of the City of Kyle Code of Ordinances. This item also has a public hearing. Ms. Sharp. What did I say, five oh? I meant six oh, just for the record. Six oh was the last vote.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight we have several proposed code amendments for you. There's kind of a lot here. So at the end of each slide, if you have any questions for me to clarify, please feel free to stop me. And then we'll just kind of go through these. So here's kind of the summary of a lot of the proposed changes. We're hoping to kind of clarify a lot of discrepancies in our code, clarify some of our side setbacks, increase flexibility in certain areas, and then add some additional requirements and others, and we'll get into more detail as we go along. So for section fifty-three thirty-three H, this one would be to provide clarification between the city's current zoning code and any platted setbacks that may exist. We're proposing to add this note at the end that if a discrepancy between platted setbacks in the zoning code exists, the less restrictive setbacks shall apply. It's not really common practice to have platted setbacks, but we do have a few areas in the City of Kyle that have platted setbacks. And it really only becomes an issue when, say, homeowners want to add on like a covered patio, things like that, where they may have a larger setback than what our current code has. So they wouldn't get the full use of their property compared to other setbacks. So any questions on that one? Okay. So on this one, there's a couple of things. I know this chart's a little bit difficult to read. On this one, we're looking to provide clarification on corner lot setbacks and also provide reference to the R one zoning district from ordinance ninety-two. So as you can see on the chart, there are two basically corner lot side street setbacks, and the setbacks are different. And so we are wanting to get rid of the street side yard setback as we typically have been applying the corner lot at side street or alleyway. They're pretty much.
So Kayla, this is important that the sides, the side setbacks prevent people from using their backyards up to a certain point because we're reserving the right to put in lines. But our entire system is built using the front yards and and different different sections. And so essentially by reducing the side setback, we're giving people more of their yard to use. Is that correct?
This is setback, not municipal utility easement. So the municipal utility easement would still be there and usually on sides, that's five feet. This is.
What was the conflict that that was that we were discussing? Do you know what I'm talking about?
This was the, this was the previous slide.
Oh.
So this one was the the platted setbacks.
Okay.
So we're we're clarifying that one.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So we'll clarify the discrepancy with platted setbacks. The least restrictive will apply. And so on this one, we are wanting to get rid of, like I said, that it's basically a duplication, but the setbacks are different. And so we're wanting to keep the one that we've been applying most often. They're basically the same thing. We don't define the difference between the two in the code. And so like I said, we're wanting to get rid of the one that.
So what was the the MUE proposal to eliminate it?
There was not one for the MUE. That's a separate issue. The one that we were discussing.
The setbacks is the the other issue that we we had looked at. I believe it was in Hometown Kyle.
Hometown Kyle has.
That we had a resident issue. That was the first issue that I was referring to, Mayor. Maybe I misunderstood you.
No, that's correct. Hometown Kyle, there's a couple of other neighborhoods that I'm sure in similar situations.
Well, I knew the issue affecting the one homeowner that was emailing that we were going back and forth was going to affect many people. So I just want to make sure it was it was being addressed.
Yes, the previous slide would address that issue.
Yeah, and I I just, I think Kayla may have referred to this a little bit before, but there's, these are a series of cleanup items that we would recommend. But they're really placeholders until we have an entire development code rewrite, which we're going to be going through that process and bringing a consultant in to help us do that. But these are just several things that we've seen pinch points on over the last few months, and we just wanted to try to address. And that's one that I know, Mayor, you specifically had seen about. We've tried to rewrite chapter fifty-three a couple of times. So I hope the consultant you hire is a very good consultant because it's a can of worms is what I was told by multiple planning directors through the years. Because there's just nobody will agree on the proper sign signage, you know?
It's certainly a can of worms that we're about to.
You're saying the intention is to do a complete rewrite of chapter fifty-three?
So we will.
Entire code, yes, sir, including that chapter.
Basically entire code, zoning subdivisions, signs.
Agenda tonight, but but that's what we'll be bringing back. Twenty-nine, too?
We have a few proposed for chapter twenty-nine, just some cleanup items again. So this is all just stuff that we in the planning department deal with on a daily basis that we're, you know, kind of working out with, you know, homeowners, developers, things like that that we think while we're in the process of waiting on that development code rewrite will really help us with how we process applications, also kind of help reduce time to process those applications as there won't be so much back and forth. We can just say, hey, we've given ourselves flexibility here, or hey, this was really confusing. We've now clarified.
So the code rewrite, it's, you're not, are you talking about smart code and going into going down that path? Like, is it to that level of a code rewrite on the zoning?
We do not have that information yet. We have the, I think the RFQ has closed, and so we'll be bringing a contract forward relatively soon.
But you're you're not saying no, you're you're saying possibly.
I am not sure.
All right, okay, all right, that's a big one. Let Melissa may address that a little bit.
That sounds like a Melissa question.
Sorry. I just, I want us to know what we're in for if you, once you talk about code rewrite, because that's, it, I think it's multiple years in San Marcos. Austin did multiple years, and I don't think either of them passed. I'm not sure, but maybe San Marcos did the smart code. So I just don't want us to work on it. I can't remember the outcome. I just.
You're right. Code rewrites are very, very, very interesting. I think honestly, and they can be hard, I I really want this to be a good public engagement process of a code rewrite that not only you as council members would buy off on, but our planning zoning commission would be involved in as as well as citizens. So we have a new comp plan, so we should definitely look at our code, which is what we're trying to do to help implement our comprehensive plan.
I guess, do you, are you talking about us going through and making changes and revisions to the various zones? And are you talking about development by right through a smart code where it's all laid out and there's not zoning applications anymore? I mean, like, there's a. Talking about form-based code, is that what you're referring to? Yeah.
From my experience, I would say form-based code, I think, works in in some areas. It doesn't necessarily work everywhere. So.
You just aren't sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Like, do I think form-based could be appropriate in like a downtown setting where you have a good form and you're you're doing some infill to put into that? Absolutely. Do I think it necessarily works on I thirty-five where you have a completely different form? Not not necessarily from my perspective, just experience. But I do think there's ways that you can look at kind of tackling that and obviously implementing your your comp plan at the same time. So we've had a lot of different things, looking at what our future land uses can be, what zoning would be appropriate for that, really kind of looking at our our uses and our use chart and really kind of pin, you know, focusing in and and working on what could help.
So we're at the, we're at the RF, the RFP has been sent out. We've received our bids. You're about to start going through them?
Yes.
So do you have some kind of timeline before when we're going to start needing to be ready for all? Like, is this a first quarter of next year, second quarter of next year, three years away?
Oh, I think this would be.
December of twenty twenty-six is fine by me. You're not going to be that lucky.
It won't be that far, though, but yes.
It's an involved process. We do want to get started on it. They'll have a lot of pieces to it, but it it's something that just has to be done. So let me, let me be clear. I'm asking because I know how hard the process is, but our code is is in dire need of such a thing. It needs work. It's not, it's not as, it's it's hard to understand. It's hard for people to navigate. It's hard to have some predictive idea of what even is to expect. And so. I think there's probably some buckets as you look at the code. There's probably some very hard pieces, like you were talking about some of those chapters. And there's some other low-hanging fruit that we can go after and. The sign code and zoning is, I mean, I don't know that there are two that are bigger than those. But there's good models in other places that we can go to. I mean, we've got, I still think in those chapters, there is some low-hanging fruit that we could go after and attack.
And and I will say honestly, all the items that Kayla is really presenting tonight are some low hanging. Truly some things that we kind of looked at that these are not whole-scale overhauls of the the code that you're seeing for these amendments tonight. They're really at, hey, let's let's fix this discrepancy between our, you know, platted setbacks and zoning setbacks. Oh, you have two side setbacks requirements with different standards in each one. Let's just pick one to apply versus convoluted side setbacks for that. The other one that I think Kayla was going to talk about this is for, we have an old R one zoning district that we referenced, but we pull out an old ninety-two ordinance to pull out those setbacks. Like, you know, let's put that use in this code here. So everyone that is.
You're putting the vestigial, you're just adding it. That's just what it currently is.
And this is what is currently applied for. So, hey, let's not pull out this old code reference and actually include it in in this zoning setback, you know, so in the use chart. So when people know that they're zoned the R one district, that wait for it, the setbacks are shown on the use chart. So, I mean, this truly is kind of low-hanging fruit for that. This next one, you know, when we're looking at parking, I think parking requirements change over time. I think there should be some flexibility when you when you have a parking requirements and shared parking uses between sites. So really looking at, you know, the planning department to be able to utilize our standards for parking ratios and parking requirements for that, and then having P and Z be kind of the second step in that, and then council being the the final step for kind of figuring out those those parking requirements and ratios. So again, looking at kind of low-hanging fruit to really kind of handle maybe some flexibility in in that. So that's, I think, these next couple of slides. I'm sorry, Kayla, it kind of just took over, I think. So for that on the on these code amendments. But again, these are not whole-scale overhauls. It's just kind of some low-hanging fruit. We were hoping to make our lives a little bit easier as we current, current, continue to use the current code as we work to really updating our entire code in this, in the kind of unified development code process.
And just to kind of add on that, as I'm sure y'all are all very aware, you know, we do see a lot of planned unit developments or PUDs that kind of modify these standards because they are, you know, kind of outdated and piecemeal together. So that probably won't get rid of that, but for anything that is existing or goes through kind of what we call the straight zoning process, it will help clear up a lot of things in the interim while we work through that development code rewrite.
I got an email that you point of order because you changed the topic that we just had a little while ago.
You're calling a port of order?
Yeah, because you were changing the topic. I think it was supposed to be about signs, and you distracted the whole conversation. A resident emailed me and said, mayor is out of order.
Okay, well, what are you saying?
Were you out of order?
Well, would you know, because you know their rules of council?
Did we, did we start talking about setbacks, things that were not related to the agenda item?
Setbacks are on the agenda.
I just want clarification that we're not changing discussions.
What the agenda item is, is some low-hanging fruit items that our planning department has brought while we wait for a code rewrite. I think it even says in the agenda memo or staff memo that it is about low-hanging fruit items until we rewrite the code. So I think the questions that the mayor was asking about when we intend to rewrite the code, we're probably on point for the item.
Okay. Well, just wanted clarification that you were right. We're we're fault, we're doing, we're talking about what's on the agenda item. Okay.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Go ahead.
All right. So for this one, it's section fifty-three thirty-three N. So on this one, previously, it allowed the council to determine appropriate often on-street parking for uses not within the categories listed in our parking chart. We are proposing changing that to the planning department. The the use chart for the parking is it's kind of, it's a little bit messy. It's a little bit confusing. And so we're hoping that the planning department could take on that responsibility. And then if if applicants did not like the planning department's decision, then it would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and then potentially appeal to city council if they're still not comfortable with that decision. This just allows some flexibility. Typically, this stuff isn't worked out until site plan. And so generally having to bring it to council slows down the process. Also could not tell you the last time it was maybe actually brought to council as this is kind of, it's pretty rare that we have something that we can't kind of make work with the current categories, but just to clear this up in case it becomes an issue. Next one, another one. This one's for shared parking. Previously, it was that the city council could grant shared parking agreements. Basically, the best way I can kind of describe this is developments like the Costco shopping center or across the highway at Amberwood Ranch, a lot of those uses will be sharing parking across the entire site, whereas otherwise, each individual use on its own may either exceed the amount of parking that they need by installing the amount of parking that's required. So say you have a restaurant that needs ten parking spaces, but they're required to have twenty. Meanwhile, over here, you have another restaurant that needs thirty parking spaces and they can only install twenty. So allowing that shared parking helps to kind of get the overall parking count down.
That brings up a good question as well, Mayor, because like Drive River, Dry River District area, there's so many of those restaurants there. And I don't know, like, if I pull up to Willie's, but I'm going to Costco, I don't know, am I in their spot or not? Because, you know, there's towing signs all over the place in 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 other cities. And I think somebody mentioned that before to me. He's like, well, where do you park? I said, you just park wherever you can. So that's kind of what.
Have a shared use agreement?
That's kind of like, is that what it is?
What's the difference between what he's talking about? Because they, that's an example of us already doing that. And I remember Will actually.
Yes, they.
Discussing it when we, the whole plan was brought forward.
Yes, they are doing shared parking across the entire site. That one had some additional constraints with the creek running behind some of those.
Is that because of the development agreement that allowed that to happen? And so this, you're just putting it into the code so that it doesn't require that?
I'm not sure how that one was, in particular, was granted, but this is something that it previously stated that the the council would grant those shared parking agreements. And so now we're kind of leaving that up to the planning department to.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Grant those agreements, basically granting them via the site plan. It wouldn't necessarily.
This isn't establishing shared use. It's just redefining the process they go through.
Yes.
Okay, I see. All right.
Yes. So and then any spaces allowed to be shared would count towards the number of spaces that each use would have to provide. Another one, this is kind of establishing a special special exception and variance process. So any variances to the standards within this section would be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission and then appeal to the city council. So if if they didn't like the planning department's determination on, you know, appropriate number of parking spaces or say we said, no, you can't share your parking, if they didn't like that decision, they would take it to the. that decision, they would take it to the planning and zoning commission. Planning and zoning commission says, no, they don't like that, they'll bring it to council.
But if, if you, if the planning and zoning commission says yes, it doesn't go to council?
Correct.
So it just, they all have final authority unless of an appeal?
Correct, yeah. Okay, and then another one that has been a pretty big topic of conversation, at least since I've been here, is parking for restaurants. Currently, our parking ratio for restaurants is one space for every four seats provided for customer service. We're proposing to change this to one space for every 100 square feet of gross floor area. This aligns with best practice, it aligns with building code, it also takes into account parking for the employees of that restaurant, whereas per customer seats does not. Hopefully, it will kind of help mitigate some of the parking issues we've seen with a lot of restaurants coming to Kyle.
Would that also conclude, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So does that give us more parking spaces or less parking spaces?
It kind of depends on ultimately the, the size of the restaurant. If it's, you know, a really small space, then maybe it reduces the number of parking required. It truly just depends. We also have a lot of shell buildings that maybe we know a tenant could be a restaurant, but they don't know at the time of the site plan, and so then they're having to work to determine, hey, how many seats could this possibly fit?
Okay, I, I like that idea. All right, thank you.
If you don't mind, real quick to comment, I was going to make, how does that fit into those restaurants that have curbside or to-go and things like that? Those are temporary spots, correct? So let's say you go to Chili's and they got three slots, does that accumulate for this as well?
So that counts, those, generally those parking spaces are accounted for with their, so say, say it's calculated as part of their gross floor area, whatever parking spaces they have based on their gross floor area. Ultimately, it's up to that restaurant to decide if they want to designate some of those. But for, for our standards, they would have the number of required parking spaces if they choose to designate those as, you know, 15 minute or curbside parking or whatever, that would be up to the restaurant.
Well, you know, for myself, I think the 100 square feet compared to the, based on seats is, it probably makes more sense just because of the way restaurants keep changing their business model. But I've kind of belonged to the school of thought that we should abolish parking minimums and that the determination for how many parking spots a business needs for its business is best made by it and not us. And the reason for that is like you see oftentimes, sees of empty parking like in front of Target and Kohl's, and they put those parking spots there because we made them. And imagine if we had only done half that, which is probably what they may have wanted, who knows, but we could have had more businesses and restaurants there. And then conversely, if a business, if a developer puts in a, a property and it's so busy that, and they, or they underparked it, then the consequences, it's a market, like you go where there's good parking. If they messed up, like if I can't go to Willie's because there's too much parking, then I may go up to Torchy's, or I may go to Casa Marias or something. And that's, to me, that's just fine. I don't like forcing them to have more parking and more concrete and pavement, but I think this is probably more dynamic, but it doesn't necessarily account for the different types of restaurants, because square footage and parking don't always correlate any more than chairs and parking, depending on the restaurant.
Correct, it, it doesn't necessarily account for all scenarios. I will say a good example of this parking ratio in effect in Kyle right now is the, the Kyle Crossing Shopping Center where Chipotle, Cava, Snooze are, they did the 1 to 100 ratio. So that, if that kind of gives you a good example.
Well, and another, and another way that the reason that works is because you've got some breakfast places, and then you've got some lunch places, and then some dinner places, but the breakfast places aren't open at dinner, and so they're using those parking spots over and over, which I thi, I think that, you know, confirms what I'm saying, which is let them figure out that dynamic and a really good, you know, developer who's doing it in a commercial district with multiple restaurants will take that as their top priority, and they have way more information than what we have, which is base standard code. Is there, is there an appeals process to it? Because like, for example, when Costco came in, they wanted a parking variance, we, we were like, yeah, we don't, we, we don't care how you park your customers. If you're coming, we're going to entrust you to do that. But if that's through a development agreement, is there a way for us to give?
So it goes back to one of the previous slides, if they want to request a variance from that, typically nine times out of 10, none of them are going to ask for less than what's required. They all want as much parking as they can get from our experience. But say that is the case, or they say, hey, great that you updated that, but we actually need more parking because we have a really high turnover, and what they want is beyond, because this would be a minimum, so we allow 1.5 times the minimum ratio for our maximum. So say you have 100 parking spaces, minimum, your maximum's 150. So if they wanted more than that, there is an appeals process.
I think that's a, that's a great observation, mayor. There are some industries that they've got the demand, customers will be there all throughout the week, grocery stores, right? But then you have these other big blocks that you don't see many people parked in there. So it does, just doesn't make sense, and it's underutilized and probably not, not good to the environment either, so, good observation.
Well, while I say abolishing the parking minimums, I don't mean the maximums, because I think what Kayla said is right, like they do like to go for a lot of parking, and that's not necessarily the highest and best use, so.
But, but like you said, leave it up to them to decide what is their customer demand, right? So, would make sense.
And of course, this is something that we could look at again with the development code rewrite, but in the meantime.
We'll talk, we'll see this conversation again down the road.
We, I think we can all foresee the future in revisiting this conversation soon with the development code rewrite, but this will help, help us in the interim, hopefully, so. All right, next one, this one is requiring a traffic impact analysis for larger developments, specifically like planned unit developments, or if they're asking for a development agreement, a TERS, PID, MUD, any sort of incentive, it would require a traffic impact analysis. I think we all know the state of our current roads and we are working to improve that, but really getting a grasp on how some of these new developments will be impacting our roads and traffic is a big priority, I think to all of us, especially the planning department. So we would require traffic impact analysis in these cases.
I have a question about that. So let's say that the traffic impact analysis does come back with the need for us to change something in an intersection, I don't know if we have a ratio that, you know, that we are assessing when we do this impact analysis. Is there anything that we can add up to this where that developer would have to take care of the design or likely space, some portion of the design of whatever need, like let's say if we have to redesign an intersection, if there needs to be an assessment whether we have to change from a light to a roundabout, how do we get the developer to at least pay a portion of the design of this new intersection? I'm just talking about intersections because that has been such a big deal for us.
So typically, that would kind of be the outcome of a traffic impact analysis, it would kind of help identify, you know, the impact of that development on the roads and any improvements to intersections, you know, decel lanes, turn lanes, things like that, and.
But what I would like to see is for them, since they are bringing that development, for them to pay for at least the design or part of the construction.
Sally, I will say TIA's really look at proportional share of what those traffic improvements will be. It would be up to, you know, us as staff to present that for you, and then maybe as part of the development agreements or other PUD agreements to outline, to really identify, you know, if it's more than just their proportional share to work that in. But at least we would have the information and really present to you as, as part of these development process, understanding that these TIA's are done ahead of time.
Okay.
All right, this item has a public hearing? If there are no.
We're not going.
Oh, you've got way more to go.
I'm on slide nine of 19, so, sorry to burst your bubble on that one, but, so, the next one.
I'm on no talk. I'm, I'm sorry, I brought up the rewrite. Maybe, maybe it was out of order after all. It's out of bedtime order.
Hopefully, the rest of these will be a little bit more simple, but we'll see. So this next one would be allowing wireless telecommunication facilities in any zoning district. That's really the only change we're wanting to make here at this point. Currently, they're only allowed in, what is that, three or four zoning districts, which is a little bit, it's just, it's not best practice, really. We already have a lot of requirements in place that they have to be a certain distance from residential and things like that. So we already kind of have those precautions in place that would kind of help to allow for us to permit them in any zoning district. And then we also have an RFP out for wireless cell communication facilities that will hopefully be bringing back that one soon as well, and there may be some additional amendments proposed with that one. So, all right, now we're on to signs. This one is just adding a definition for master sign plans. And then we're going to, we're proposing to allow for the creation of master sign plans. This would be separate from kind of the entitlement process. When we have PUDs and DAs and things like that, we'll see a lot of master sign plans through that, but there's currently nothing in our code that allows for them outside of that process. And our sign code is somewhat dated, it's very confusing, it's kind of like the zoning code, it's been kind of piecemealed together. And so we're hoping that this will help alleviate some of the, some of the battles we face on a daily basis with our, with our sign code. So this would allow the planning department to have the authority to approve a master sign plan for cohesive commercial zone properties with three or more businesses. Master sign plans would need to provide consistent and architecturally compatible signs within a development, and it would allow for some flexibility from our sign chapter. So this is kind of some of the criteria we're proposing. It would allow for multi-tenant and single-tenant monument signs. For a multi-tenant sign, the maximum height would be 45 feet, current height, at least on I-35 for a multi-tenant is 55 feet, so bringing that down a little bit. And then a maximum of 250 square feet per multi-tenant sign, so that encompasses all tenant panels and the kind of identification portion of the sign, all has to be within that 250 square feet. And then consistent with the rest of our sign code, the entire structure would have to be covered in masonry. And then each business could have a tenant panel on each multi-tenant sign within the development, and then it would be no more than one freestanding multi-tenant sign for each street on which the lot or development has frontage, and then lots or developments having more than 400 feet of street frontage on a single street may have one additional freestanding sign per each additional 300 feet. That's a little bit confusing. And then single-tenant signs would be permitted only as monument signs. Currently, there are some allowances for what would be considered like pylon signs along the I-35 frontage, so that would reduce those down to monuments, but would also allow for the multi-tenant signs in addition to that.
So this proposed changes eliminates pylon signs from I-35?
In, when they apply for a master sign plan, so only in cases where developments elect to create a master sign plan.
They wouldn't have to create a master sign plan?
They don't have to, but they have the option to. It's something we get a lot of interest in because of how our code is currently worded for allowances for like multi-tenant signs and things like that. Currently, it's one freestanding sign per lot, and we have a few developments that were platted as one lot that have multiple tenants, multiple buildings, but they kind of lease out each pad site. But since it's platted as one lot, they can only have one freestanding sign, and the way our code is currently worded, they can only have six tenant panels on that sign. So if they have a shopping center with eight businesses, it's one lot, they can only have six tenant panels, someone's not getting their signage.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking of it more from the single pylon use, so I've experienced with that. I went through the planning department on a pylon sign ten, 10 years ago. So I, I know that people who buy land on I-35 and wish to build businesses, master plan developments, it's a completely different thing, but an individual who wants to buy and wants to put up a lot, they would still be able to, the I-35 standard gives height and has all that, that this is not taking that away?
No.
Okay.
This is, this applies to like basically shopping centers that have three or more businesses, they can elect to go through this master sign plan process if they want to. So your, your single, your single, like, for example, the, the previous car lot that you had.
But it says single-tenant signs will be permitted, but when you say single tenants, you're saying single tenants within a multi-tenant? Like freestanding within a.
So, so say, you know, Dry River District, the Endeavor Project where Costco is, a lot of those businesses on the frontage have their individual monument signs, but they also have multi-tenant signs for the entire development, so it would be similar to that. So it wouldn't allow individual pylon signs for each of those businesses, but it would allow those monuments and then the multi-tenant signs.
Okay, I will be quiet. I can, I can talk forever about the sign code, so there's no end to my questions on this, I'm sorry. It's a big deal, it's a big deal for folks who are trying to do signs on I-35. The multi-tenant guys, the developers, they can work with y'all, and they have a team of people to work out any problems, but I just wanted to make sure that the single-tenant guy was okay. The actual, somebody wants to put in a business, they, on I-35, they compete with, they can compete with everyone else and put a sign up.
Right, so if this is like a one-off business that's not in a cohesive, like overall shopping center, then they would still be allowed to have their pylon sign.
Yeah, this is only for master sign plans.
Okay, and then this just kind of outlines the application process and materials we would require, design size, height, materials, things like that, number of signs, and then allows for an appeals process, as this is something that would be ideally approved by the planning department, and then any appeals, similar to some of the ones in the zoning chapter, would go to the planning and zoning commission and then could be appealed to city council if needed. Okay, and then for illumination requirements for signs, we have a pretty big discrepancy between illumination requirements for signs versus our outdoor lighting requirements, which are a little bit more consistent with dark sky. And so we're hoping to kind of clarify that conflict and allow for some illumination types that create a little bit less light pollution. A lot of our monument signs not on I-35 as it stands require ground lighting, that's, you know, attached in the ground, pointed up at the sign, which creates a lot of light pollution, or downlighting, which creates a little bit less light pollution, but it still creates a decent amount. So this would hopefully clarify some of that.
I, I do like that idea, with the LED technology, I mean, that downlighting is probably best, so.
Okay. All right, we're at the end, we still have a public hearing.
All right, if there are no objections, this item has a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing now, seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, it's now closed. The sign code changes, you never know if they're good or bad until later when you get a phone call, because it just does not work for everyone.
Until we start implementing, you know, I think we feel pretty confident with the changes, but we'll see, we'll see how it goes.
It's good to see, we haven't done a lot of code revision, and we were doing a lot a few years back, and then we, we've slowed down on code, code rewrites, but it's not because it wasn't needed, it's because we just stopped prioritizing the workflow. So I'm glad to see the planning department growing and getting more capable of being proactive. I know it's been hair on fire for about 10 years.
Yeah, a long time.
So, and just, just as an aside, I, I'm pretty, I was telling Brian earlier, I'm just very impressed with the, the capability of our staff as we are growing. It's not unnoticed, you know, we have, we have our drama and our issues here that we deal with, but underneath that is a, is a staffing machine. but underneath that is a staffing machine that is noticeably getting more capable, so.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item thirty as proposed.
Motion by Mayor Protim, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, approve agenda item thirty, is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, our motion carries six to zero, thank you Kayla.
Thank you.
Next up, agenda item thirty-one, consider approval of a resolution, amending Resolution fifteen sixty-five, which provided for the defeasance in calling for redemption certain currently outstanding bond obligations. Do you want to bring up thirty-two at the same time on this, because one's a defeasance and one's an ad valorem?
They're related, but I think we need to quickly cover what we're doing on the defeasance, the change, and then that will feed into a proposal slides on thirty-two.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Stephanie Libby, Norton Rose Holbright, Bond Council for the city. What we're bringing before you tonight is just an updated defeasance resolution. You all adopted a defeasance resolution on July second. At the time, that was based on projected property values. And the time between July second and now taxable values have become certified. And those certified values changed from where the original projections were. So we're coming back before you tonight to bring an updated defeasance resolution. We were gonna reduce the amount of bonds to be redeemed in order to maintain the tax rate that City Council had indicated is intent to retain. So Andrew Friedman, Witsamco Capital Markets is here to talk with you all about the financial aspects of the defeasance, the calculations either related to the tax rate or how they determined the amount of bonds that would be defeased next year. So I can turn it over to him if you guys have any questions. If you have any questions about the resolution itself, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Alright, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Friedman?
Lou, yeah, I know it's getting late, so I'm trying to keep it short. So we have to defees more bonds, right, to get to point four-six-nine-three?
Defees less bonds.
Less bonds, but not less than a million.
Not less than a million is based on the certified values as of July twenty-fifth.
So because we have to defees less bonds, that's actually a good sign. We're paying off debt, less debt early, I guess?
I would say it'd be better to be paying off more bonds. Our values adjusted lower than anticipated as a result. We established in July second a minimum amount of bonds to be called. In order to defees less bonds than that, we need to amend that defeasance resolution. Still a good thing to be defeesing bonds, but in order to maintain the tax rate you all are targeting, we need to defees less than we were anticipating.
Okay. Just wanted everyone to hear that, alright, thank you.
So the options are, we can, if we want to pay off the three-point-six, the rate will be four-point-four-nine-nine. If we want to reduce the amount we pay off to keep the tax rate the same, then those are the options.
Yes, sir.
So I think probably we want to do the lower amount and keep the tax rate the same. I just want to say on the record that I think the tax, the future tax rate is higher than point four-nine-nine. So I think the financially smart thing to do would be to go to the four-nine-nine, and I would support that. But I understand if we want to make it smaller. Does anybody have any thoughts or emotions? Councilmember Parsley?
I would like to keep the tax rate as is with the zero-point-four-six-nine-three. So I would like to make a motion to, and I don't know if that's, that will be the direction that you need, to keep the tax rate of zero-point-four-six-ninety-three.
Second, motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we adopt the tax rate of, well, it's not adopting the tax rate, that's the next item. Prove the resolution. Prove the resolution. And to establish, no, not establish, we're not establishing, we're defeating. To defeat the bonds for a million dollars. Alright, just.
In order to keep the tax rate. Make a motion to adopt the amended and restated resolution.
Okay, so I retract that, so I would like to make a motion to.
Adopt.
Adopt.
The amended and restated resolution.
They, oh my god, I just lost myself. Amend and restate the resolution.
Yes.
For four-point-six.
For four-point-six, zero-point-four-six-ninety-three.
Alright, motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we adopt what y'all said. Is there discussion on that motion? Alright, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, our motion carries six to zero. The next item is thirty-two, consider approval of a resolution to record City Council's vote to place a proposal on the agenda of a future City Council meeting as an action item to adopt an ad valorem tax rate that is higher than the no new revenue tax rate for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, roll call vote requested.
Yes, sir. So this item is required by state law, we'll make it quick. We'll go over why and when this resolution is required. We'll go over the certified assessed valuations for twenty-four. We'll go over the property tax rates for twenty-four. We'll go over the changes in average valuations. So why is this resolution required? When the city's proposed tax rate exceeds the no new revenue tax rate, the Texas tax code requires that before the governing body, which is the City Council, can take a vote to adopt the proposed tax rate, it must first adopt a resolution to record their vote as to whether they would consider a proposal at a future City Council meeting, which is on August twentieth, to adopt a tax rate that is higher than the no new revenue tax rate. Number two is very important. The tax code further requires that the public notice for the meeting to vote on the city's tax rate for August twentieth, when published in the newspaper, must also show the governing body's recorded vote for this resolution tonight. So that's why we are requesting a roll call vote. For tax year twenty-four, property tax rates for the city of Kyle are as follows. The city manager's recommended proposed tax rate is zero-point-four-six-ninety-three per one-hundred dollars of taxable assessed valuation. The no new revenue tax rate is forty-five-sixty-two. The voter approval tax rate is forty-six-ninety-three. So as I've highlighted on this slide, the proposed tax rate is higher than the no new revenue tax rate. Hence, a resolution is required to record Council's vote to consider the proposal to adopt a tax rate that is higher. City Council meeting dates for public hearing and adoption of tax rates, August twentieth is our first public hearing and the first reading of adoption ordinance. September thirtieth is our second public hearing and the second reading of adoption ordinance. So a resolution must be voted on by the City Council before August twentieth. So here's a quick snapshot of our taxable assessed valuations for tax year twenty-four. Six-point-nine billion, which is four-hundred-and-twenty-six million higher than the year before. Almost seven percent increase from the prior certified values. Tax rates for next year, as compared to current tax rate, our current tax rate is forty-six-ninety-three. The no new revenue tax rate based on the new assessed valuation is forty-five-sixty-two. Voter approval tax rate is forty-six-ninety-three, and the city's proposed tax rate is also forty-six-ninety-three. So how does that impact an average home in Kyle, Texas? The average value of a residential home in Kyle is, based on the assessed valuations, is three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-five-forty-three in twenty-twenty-four as compared to three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy dollars in twenty-three. That's a reduction of twenty-nine-thousand-seven-twenty-seven, or eight-point-four percent. The tax rate between the two years remains the same, forty-six-ninety-three, so there is no change. The tax levy on an average home is going to be one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents less based on the new assessed valuations. This is an average home, not all homes are gonna be seeing a reduction in value. The homestead reduction for the city of Kyle taxes, we allow forty-thousand dollars in homestead reduction. Since the tax rate is the same between last year and this year, that reduction is the same amount, there's no change. So when you look at the last column, an average home in Kyle, Texas, residential home, we'll see a one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents reduction in their city of Kyle tax bill, or nine-point-four-three percent. Staff recommendation, based on Council's direction to staff on July second, to maintain the city's tax rate for tax year twenty-twenty-four at the same level as the current tax rate of forty-six-ninety-three, staff is recommending approval of this resolution and is also requesting a roll call vote by City Council.
Alright, thank you, Perez. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Motions?
No, thank you, Perez, that was very clear, thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to continue to keep the tax rate at as is by approving agenda item number thirty-two.
Second.
Our motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Mayor Protim, that we approve agenda item thirty-two, is there discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Heiser is absent, Mitchell?
Here.
Yes.
He's still here.
It's been a long night.
Barely. Barely.
Parsley?
Here, oh. Yes.
It's contagious.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Tobias?
Aye.
Motion passes, five yeses, one aye.
Thank you, Council.
Two hears. Alright, next up is agenda item thirty-three. Consider impossible action to direct City Manager and staff to categorize requested items for Council staff and developers in all development agreements and future projects. Councilmember Zuniga.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this, I know it's getting late, Brian, you and I had talked about this before, and just, this is really just to transfer information and knowledge from one council to another council, from staff to staff, and, you know, developers. So I remember an example of when a project came and there was, we were unsure who wanted the flats, who wanted the townhomes, and it weren't really requested by the developer, I had not known that until I'd spoken with you. So just like, to be clear for everybody, when we take the votes, it would be good to have like a category of what was request made at the time, because we all were changed, you know, we're not, we're not gonna stay here, you know, forever. So just that there's a categorization of what's being requested so that we all have that information transferred into, to each other, so when, you know, we can make better votes.
Can I ask a question, I'll just step out, just so I make sure that I understand what you say. So you mean that when we have a development agreement, that there is a category saying Councilmember Zuniga requested for the park to have ten trees?
I like to say like council, staff, and developer. Like who's asking for what? It would be better, because remember, Two Step came? So there was flats and there was townhomes, and the developer really didn't request those. So they were willing to remove them, but I didn't know that. So it'd have been good information for me to know that, okay, at that time, we were thinking about the density there and stuff, and maybe at that time that was good to have in there, but when they came, they didn't really need them. So people were already upset about the apartments coming, they didn't want anymore. So it was like, I didn't know that information.
I thought that came from P&amp;Z.
Yeah, but we didn't know that. So I thought the developer was requesting those, and they were.
I knew it.
I knew it.
Some of us knew, the people who were longer knew.
So it would be the negotiation process that you want established in the development agreement, so that residents know who, how the things got to be where they were?
Well, I'd like to see, like, because some of these projects take years, right, three or four years, and then the council has changed, and so like the council doesn't understand who made the request. Was it a staff request, was it council request, or a developer request? So now we would all have more transparency in knowing, like, how did that project come? You know, why did, why did, why were those items requested in there?
So would it be like a category negotiation process, and this is the agreement we ended up with after the back and forths?
I would just like to see a table, small categories that we see in the presentation, so that it's easily to find and.
Oh, okay, so like this is what the developer presented, and this is what, let's say, council requested, or this is what staff is recommending, that we adjust in the development agreement, kind of thing?
So, just to be clear, just real quick, just add to the conversation, is that when we do the request, when they come back and the DA, staff always lines out what requests council wanted and added to it, and that's in the language.
Right, that's in the DA, but this was right before the DA, when we were still getting into like the second time they got called back, we were still kind of discussing what was it that we were willing to do?
Yeah.
We didn't know that that was already a request that the developer didn't care for, the flats and the townhomes. So I thought that was confusing, you know?
I knew the developer didn't want it, but council did, so council gave direction on that.
Yeah, but I guess what I would say is, I think your point, your broader point, because it has happened a few different times where a negotiation lasts a long times, and even staff sometimes doesn't know, because the council's changing, they don't necessarily know how best to negotiate, so.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, my opinion is, staff negotiates, we give our feedback as to what we want, they make proposals, we decide whether we agree, but the development agreement itself is a single document that's approved by a single body. And whether I requested it, or you requested, but I actually wanted it, and I was just glad you did, whether that's noted or not, it's what we're voting on, you know? But so, but we also, I guess what I'm saying is, we also need something that kind of helps us streamline that process.
Well, the community, right, wanted to know why council wanted the townhomes and the flats, right? And it was, staff was the ones who put it in because of the plan, the comp plan.
The Planning and Zoning Commission went into great detail in their discussion and made that request and amended it on the spot in a live meeting. So anyway, it doesn't matter, your point is taken, but at the same time, I'm just saying that we can't change our development agreements to have individual requests in, because those are contracts. We all vote on them.
Well, if P&amp;Z was the one that made the request, it would have been nice to have that in the materials, that this was P&amp;Z asking for these things.
It was presented to us as well in that way, so.
I don't think, I don't.
It does, I don't want to argue with you on that particular.
Like, that was such a big, like, obvious thing that didn't look like it should be in there. That's really why it came up.
Well, it's no use going back and forth and regretting the past.
So how do we get more clarity on this?
In the presentation, we could add a slide, something like that, to try to clarify that. I do agree with a comment from the mayor about development agreements, they are what they are, and the language isn't there for the council to adopt or not adopt or make amendments, but maybe just as part of the communications to the council when it comes forward, we could try to clarify a couple of those things. They do get complicated over time, who's asked for what, where.
Right.
So we could do our best to try to put some information around that.
And I know Councilmembers, you think, oh, they missed a meeting?
Yeah.
So that's probably why you're lost, was that meeting you missed?
Yeah, I did miss one, on the Two Step.
And that's probably where you missed that.
Right, but I do a pretty good job of following up, and I just don't know if that was in the P&amp;Z discussion.
We can certainly look at that for the presentation, if that's, if that's the request.
Yeah, I would like to see that, just something that kind of puts everybody back on the same page. Tell that it was about.
I personally think that's a good goal, but not something that should be a requirement for them. I think they have a natural process, and we don't negotiate with the developers. We do and we don't, there's a part of it that we do, where we give our feedback and we sometimes talk to the developers directly. But it's real important that the developer and staff communicate, you know, the developers communicate on their end with their people, and staff communicates on their end with our people, and there's crossover there, but if you try to itemize out everyone's individual comments, I don't think that would work very well. Plus, I don't, I give my feedback, but I'm not, I want to vote on what's presented. The townhome question with regards to there, I had opinions about it the whole way, whether I agreed with it or not, and then taking it out and not. So I was aware of that process, but we could always be more transparent about what is motivating the underside of a contract, as opposed to it being just individuals.
What I was just afraid of was like information that gets lost, and then there's a gap, like, you know, we talk about the tree, right, the tree on the lot, council wants to save the tree, but not all councils, if council changes, the next council, if that just keeps sitting around, they don't know what was the, what was the intention.
And they're also under no obligation to do what that old council wanted.
Right.
Welcome to democracy.
I mean, you want a sports, you know, the next council may say, well, that's not something that they wanted to do.
Ding ding ding.
So it's not, but it's not.
You made it, you figured it out.
It's not. Kingsington, right, you had the great plan for Kingsington, but if we're all gone.
I think you answered the question.
The next council may not know.
Yeah, but they don't have to follow what we leave.
Right, yeah, okay.
I think we said we're gonna wait on the lean initiatives, final item, presentation, I heard that from Brian. It's not pressing, it's probably good for the public anyway, come on, Jesse. Come on, Jesse, stop. You did good today. We don't want you to ruin it here on the last item going on today.
Can we delay it?
We could certainly bring it back, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? We're done. All right, motion of adjournment. All right, we adjourn. There's one more item, but we're done now.